Okay, good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on March 27, 2024 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Publics Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the Sunshine Notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal, at the Princeton Municipal Complex, and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on March 22, 2024, and has been posted to the municipal website, www.pristin nj.gov/meetings. Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing State of Emergency Executive Order Number 292, in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meeting Protocol for local public bodies to conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public, notice that during this extension of the State of Emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Attention, Attention, Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year, and by transmitting a copy of saying to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all window doors of the Municipal Complex. Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen? Here. Ms. Coulson?
Eve, you're muted.
I am here.
Mr. Davich?
Yes, I am here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna? Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one administrative matter, which is the, uh, the year 2023 end of year report, uh, which, uh, Mr. Bridger has put together. It was in the packets and, um, Derek, do you want to summarize that for us?
I mean, it was pretty much an average year. I don't think there's anything out of the ordinary yet as far as anything that we need to report back to the board. I mean, we always put our annual, uh, recommendations of the small lot stuff, so, um, if you have questions, I'd be glad to address them, but I just, I do note there's a typo in the resolution. Um, I don't, it's, it has last year's dates. Um, I forgot to change them, um, not all of them, so. I don't know if we can approve it at this hearing, Karen, or?
Sure, we can. Yeah, sure, we can. I think it's, it's numbered paragraph one, right? Does it say now 2022 anyplace else?
Well, it says, uh, the whereas the board isn't prepared, it's 2022, it should be 2023.
Right.
And then, uh, meeting is correct. It's just 2023 instead of 2024, so.
Right.
I guess if we have a motion, we'll send it to the governing body in the planning, planning board.
Yeah, so we need a motion and a second, and then a roll call.
I move.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Claudia?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
All right, uh, we have, uh, one resolution tonight. It's, uh, case Z 24 dash 447, 95 Jefferson Road, uh, block, what is it? 2302, Lot 25. The resolution was in your packets. If anyone wants to make a motion, or if there are any questions on it, first of all, if not, if someone would like to make a motion.
I would, but I wasn't there.
I move approval.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, Claudia, can you call the roll?
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
No, no, you, no, you opposed it, Steve, so.
That's right, that's right.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I voted against it. That's right. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Forgot about that. Okay, all right, we have, um, three hearings tonight. Uh, the first is 105 Linden Lane. It's case number Z 24 dash 453, Block 11, what is it? God, it's dark in here. Block 31.04 in the, uh, R, God, I can't read it.
3B.
3B zone. Okay. Is the applicant here, or who will be representing the applicant this evening? I think, was it Mr. Kennedy on this one?
It is. Apologies. I could figure out how to turn my phone off from using its camera rather than Zoom. So give me one second and I'll fix that.
And while Mr. Kennedy's doing that, I'll just note that the, um, noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Okay, good.
Derek, we'll swear you in. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. Should I do the memo, Steve, or?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, the applicant is 105 Linden Lane LLC. They are seeking a C1 variance, uh, request for a required parking setback to enable the construction of a new accessory dwelling unit. Additional variances requested to alter the principal dwelling entry, which is currently oriented to face the street, to be placed on a well perpendicular to the front porch that does not directly face the street. Um, as mentioned earlier, properties in the R3B zone in the former Princeton borough. The subject lot is non-compliant with regard to the required 60-foot lot area, uh, lot width, the existing 50 feet, and it's also non-compliant regarding the lot area requirement of 7,200 square feet. The existing lots, 6,250 square feet. Um, it doesn't comply with the required three-to-one height, the setback, and the existing garage, um, does not meet the required five-foot setback. The existing, or is 2.8, so. Um, the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing one-car garage, a detached garage and shed, and a proposed 796-square-foot, one-and-a-half-story accessory dwelling unit will be constructed roughly in the same location as the garage. The ADU features a fully finished basement containing one habitable room. The first floor contains another habitable room consisting of, uh, the kitchen and the living room. The second floor features a third habitable room, which, uh, contains a bedroom. The R3 zone in the former borough requires one parking space for the existing single-family house. Um, the current parking space for this, for zoning purposes is in the garage. Um, the ADU ordinance permits a maximum of three habitable rooms, and, uh, any habitable rooms in excess of two requires a parking space. Section 17A, uh, 387 requires that a parking, uh, space be setback four feet from the property line, and the standard parking stall is nine by 19. The following variances are requested. They are requesting a reduced parking stall size of eight feet six inches by 18 feet from the standard nine by 19, and they are seeking a, uh, point, 0.2-foot setback, as opposed to the required four-foot parking setback. And there is a, um, existing front door located within the front porch, and the applicant is seeking to remove the existing front door that faces and is oriented, oriented towards the street to a sidewall within the front porch that does not directly face the street. Section B 17A, 403A, Section 1, um, which applies to lots on a half acre or less, requires that the dwelling and the front entrance shall be oriented to face the street and relate to the street. Um, I just asked the applicant to explain how, once, if the, the variance is approved, how people, you know, get in and out of their cars, um, and stay on the subject property. Um, that's pretty much, uh, synopsis of the case. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Board members, any questions? Mr. Bridger? Yes, Michael?
Yeah, just, um, a question about the length of the driveway. Um, just putting aside the, um, setback question. The, the driveway, and can, it can, it can, uh, adequately hold two cars in a stacked way. Is that correct?
It could, yeah. It's just, it's the ADU. The intent, I think, is to have, so one, one, you know, two different units, so one you can get out without having to move the other car.
Yeah, I understand. I just wanted to make sure that it, it could, um, without violating anything.
Yeah, there's enough, there appears to be enough room behind the front yard setback to get two cars tandem to one another. All right, um, if no other questions, Mr. Bridger. Mr. Kennedy, would you like to begin?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, members of the board. Um, we've got three, uh, folks I'd like to move over as panelists. Uh, one of them has their, their hand up, Chris Myers, uh, um, and as well as our architect, Ronnie Brengenzer, and George Jacomar are, are traffic and parking expert. Um, so as they're coming over, um, just want to thank you all, um, for your time tonight, and Ryan Kennedy from Stevenson Lee for the applicant here. As Mr. Bridger said, uh, this is an existing undersized lot, uh, in the former borough, 105 Linden. Uh, the applicant is proposing, uh, not to tear the house down or do much, um, with the existing home, a renovation that will, uh, include uh, some minor changes to the front porch, um, that, as Mr. Bridger said, requires, uh, neighborhood character variance. Interestingly, you know, the existing front porch is remaining. Um, the door is being reoriented, oriented onto the porch in a way that we feel is both kind of consistent with the neighborhood. We think that the, the porch, which is the entrance, still addresses the street. Um, but having the door, uh, angled essentially, um, allows the use of the, what was likely a former open porch in a more usable way inside, rather than kind of spilling into the, the usable space and otherwise quite small house. Um, uh, as, as Derek said, also, um, the idea is to take the existing, uh, garage in the back, which is non-conforming, it's too close to the lot line, um, and, and rebuild a conforming ADU in its place, um, but further from the lot line, so it would conform with the rear yard, uh, side yard setbacks. With parking, weren't, interestingly, uh, you know, it is a new variance condition for parking setbacks, but the driveway remains the same. We're not changing it whatsoever, um, in location. But, um, by parking two cars side by side, um, it does, uh, trigger technically a variance, even though it's not in a different location. Uh, and those two variances are one for the, it might be a little unusual for the, the zoning board to hear on, on a residential case, but we're actually, there is a, a standard stall size. We've seen more often in site plan applications, but, um, we'll hear testimony from our traffic and, and parking expert, uh, George Jacomar, that there's more than enough room to get back there, not just in the, uh, compact stall, um, sized space, but because they're fanned out, there's some extra space there as well, and we've got some, some diagrams to, to show that. Um, so on, on the setback side, we, we feel there, there certainly is room, both, uh, um, to get in and out, um, and for the EV charger that's, that's going to be back there. Um, we'll have three, uh, witnesses. Uh, now, on, under the name Chris Myers, we're actually going to have, uh, uh, Tom Pinio, uh, for the applicant, um, uh, give a brief introduction, then we've got our architect, Ron, Ronnie, um, and George Jacomar as well. Perhaps we can have the three of them sworn in, uh, together at once. Just to confirm, I see Mr. Perron and Mark Perron. Is Mr. Perron testifying? No. Not, not, not for us, no.
Okay, very good.
I'm the owner of 105 and a half Linden Lane, the next-door neighbor.
Okay, Mr. Perron, you'll have an opportunity to speak to this, but not yet. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Myers, Ms. Brengenzer, and Mr. Jacomar, uh, do you all swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, actually, Tom Pinio, I do.
Oh, Tom Pinio, okay, thank you.
Yes, I do.
All right.
Thank you. They'll be sharing a, a Zoom account or Zoom camera tonight. Uh, Tom, if, if you could, um, briefly introduce yourself and, and explain, you know, your connection to this property and, and, and what you, what you put into this project, what your plans are here.
Sure. Um, I'm Tom Pinio. I'm, uh, an owner of, uh, 105 Linden Lane. Uh, we're just super excited to be presenting this, uh, this evening, uh, and building off of some of our recent high-performance construction, including the, uh, Net Zero Project, uh, down on, uh, on Geo Avenue, uh, that was featured on the Sustainable Princeton Greenhouse Tour, and that will also be on the, uh, at the, uh, the library's, uh, uh, green, um, environmental film festival in April. Um, in place of, as you've sort of already heard, in place of a non-conforming garage, our architect Ronnie Brengenzer has designed a fully conforming ADU that we are aiming to make on the operational carbon side, 100% electric and net zero ready. Um, we'd like to take advantage of the perfect southerly orientation to add solar panels to make it fully net zero. Um, we are investing upfront, uh, in order to make the, uh, to reduce operational costs and operational carbon over the long run. Um, on the embodied carbon side, uh, we are actually going to be using a carbon sequestering wood fiber continuous insulation on this building, um, to slightly modify one thing that Derek said. Yes, we do aim to demolish the building, but, uh, it is cinder block, wood, and asphalt, so we believe we can, uh, recycle 95% plus of this, uh, of the existing structure. Um, the location on the lot is intentional, uh, in part to minimize the impact on impervious coverage. Um, as far as walkability, it's hard to beat this. Uh, 105 Linden is a five- or 10-minute walk from the middle school, the high school, the shopping center, um, and Nassau Street, 15-minute walk to the university. It's a, a great location that, that absolutely reduces the need, uh, for a car. Um, I think just in short, that we've, we've set out to develop what we feel is, uh, a, a model project for uh, sustainable development, uh, with proven and repeatable, this is important, proven and repeatable materials and methods that we hope can show what's possible and serve as a model for and template for cost-effective, high-performance, low-carbon construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Um, unless the board has any questions for the applicant, I'd like to, uh, uh, start next with our architect.
Hang on one sec. Board members, yeah, Michael?
Yeah, um, hello, Tom. Um, to, are you just developing this, or do you plan to live in it?
Uh, to, we, we plan to develop it and, and hold it and lease it.
And how, how do you control car size for that small space?
I think I'm going to leave that to, to Georges and, and Ryan in the presentation. I'm happy to weigh in after that, but they're the experts, and I'm going to let them speak to that, if that's okay.
Okay, and maybe I missed it, um, while I was thinking. Uh, do you plan to rent it out or sell?
Rent it.
Okay.
As well as the house.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And as we're. I have a question, too. What is the footprint of the existing structure, and what's the footprint of the new one? Proposed?
Tom, if you know, otherwise perhaps I can have Ronnie answer that.
I, I don't know if, uh, sorry, um, you're saying that the existing garage versus the footprint of the?
Yes.
I don't know the numbers. We do have a slide in the deck in our presentation showing the overlay of those two things. I, I don't have those numbers at the top of my, at my fingers.
Mr. Pinio, I just have a, uh, administrative question. The application indicates the owner is 105 Linden Lane LLC, care of Chris Myers. Are you a principal of the LLC, or has ownership changed?
I'm a principal of that.
Of that, okay.
Of the LLC.
Of the LLC, okay, thank you.
Um, do you want to answer that question in terms of the footprint and size, or do you want to have the architect do that?
Uh, I, I, I think perhaps if, if, since Tom doesn't know enough, off, offhand to testify, I think we should have Ronnie answer that when we, when we bring her up next, if there's no other questions.
Okay.
Fine, thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Okay, please proceed.
All right, uh, Ronnie, if you could, I know you've testified many times before this board, but, uh, give the board the brief benefit of your uh, credentials and, uh, involvement in this project.
Uh, yes, I've been working with, um, the LLC group for about a year on this project, so we, we put a lot of thought into it, and, um, I'm set excited to present it tonight. I am an architect with a small firm in Princeton. I've been in business for 33 years, and I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
We'll obviously accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and as we start with, with Ronnie and our, our slides, um, I'd like to uh, put up our, our, our one, um, exhibit, uh, of our slide deck that we provided, uh, previously to the municipality.
Do you know how many slides that is off, off the?
It should be, uh, it should, if all goes to plan, it should be 14.
Okay. So that would be your Exhibit A1?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, so Ronnie, why don't we just start right? If, if you have it, uh, handy before we get to that point, if you have, uh, the answer to, uh, Mr. Schreiber's question about the, uh, existing garage size and what, how big the ADU would, will be?
Yes. Sorry, I had to look that one up myself. Um, the, the garage is 347 square feet. That's the garage, and you can see in this first slide the little shed that's behind the garage. So that's 347 on the first floor, and the ADU is, proposed ADU is 534 square feet.
On the ground level?
On the ground level, correct.
Does, does that include the porch?
I believe it does, Steve.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Ronnie. Uh, so on our introduction here, we do have an overhead view, but I think we'll start by, we could orient the board to where we're looking at. I guess this is the zoning map here showing, uh, in, in yellow, I guess, the, uh, the R3 zone that we're in, and a, a blue arrow pointing to where this property is, is that right?
Correct, yeah. We can show an overall zoning map in the R3B zone, and then we're moving into an area map. Uh, the little blue box with the big blue arrow is showing the property. Um, you could see, as Tom was talking about, the walkability. Oh, one back to our neighbors.
Sorry.
That's, that's pretty much for the area map. Um, moving on to the neighborhood map, you could see it's in a very much a residential zone. Again, the blue box is 105 Linden Lane. See the existing house in the front and the garage in the back.
So here, there's a, this is an existing front view of the photo, uh, of the, of the house, and again, that area view. So there's arrows on the left, so that shows the, the garage that's going to come down, and then the, the front arrow shows the front porch that we're going to be talking about?
Yes.
From a, from a from a visual perspective, is, is anything much changing to the front facade?
No, it is not. The, the only thing really changing is the request to move the door that faces the street to the side of the porch. It would be on the right side there. You can see just a little dot in black, which is the mailbox. That's where the door would go. So I will point out, the house is relatively close to the street. It's about just under 26 feet away from the porch to the sidewalk, uh, the public sidewalk, which runs all the way down here. Um, so you're very close to the, the porch. You can obviously see where the front of the house is. You have a sidewalk that leads directly, straight from the public walk right to the steps of the porch. Uh, the steps go up. There's the porch. You'll see the door. Obviously, from certain angles, you would see the, the proposed door as well. So I think it'll be easy to find. The porch itself does not change, so it still relates very much to the street and the character of the neighborhood.
All right, um, going to the next slide, this is a, a kind of a color-coded shaded version of, of the site sketch here. You want to walk, walk the board through, um, what's changing and what's, what's staying the same?
Sure. The, as we say, driveway to remain at existing location. The gray area is the existing driveway. Um, it is not changing its location on the street. It's, it's, the only thing we're doing here is along the house, we've made a bit of a green area, and there was a small retaining wall that we're also removing. This gives us more green space. This also keeps this project within the impervious coverage, so we're not asking for any variance for impervious. It complies. The red dotted lines show the garage and the shed, which are non-conforming, but, but are proposed to be removed. And then you, forming ADU, um, replacing the, um, I'm sorry, replacing the garage. And the porch of the ADU, which is the lighter area, faces the green backyard. Sighting of this ADU was, was important for several reasons. One, we didn't want to change the garage, the, the driveway. It leads right to the garage, which now leads to the ADU. The driveway's convenient, and the parking's convenient to both the house and the ADU. The backyard is quite pretty. There's some, a beautiful fig tree in that backyard, and it'll lend itself to being used by, again, both the house and the ADU. And that was another reason that we chose to put the garage on this side of the property. It also backs up to, but the neighbor's garage is there as well. So you kind of have the, the two buildings together as they had always been and had always been designed.
All right, so next, um, I think we've got some, uh, floor plans of the ADU itself. Do you want to, want to take the board through what, um, what you've designed here?
So as, as everyone has mentioned, it's a complying ADU, uh, under 800 square feet. The first, uh, A1 drawing is of the basement floor plan. It has a bedroom. It has a bathroom down there, full bath, uh, laundry, with stacked washer and dryer, a mechanical room. And that is our one, one room down there. Moving up to the second, I'm sorry, the first floor, you could see the, the side of the porch faces the street, and you would come in there, in, through the door, into a living dining kitchen, very open space. That is our second room. There's also a counter room, small closet, and the stair that takes you up to the A3 drawing, which is our proposed attic slash second floor plan, which shows the bedroom, another full bath, and a closet. Um, then looking towards the elevations, here is the street side. Again, you can see the side of the porch that we discussed. The gable faces the street, so it's, it's a welcoming view from the street. It is a complying under 20 feet in height, so it's not particularly large. Um, again, back to, it's a story and a half ADU. Then you could see the left side, which is the porch facing the open area with its entry door, windows, and again, um, taking advantage of that open space. And then we move on to the right side, which is, uh, facing south. As Tom mentioned, the idea is to put solar panels on the facing, south-facing side. The building was designed from day one with that in mind, which is part of why the gable faces the street to optimize the amount of solar panels on the south-facing side. Um, on the rear, you could see the, it's, it's pretty basic on the rear. You could see the egress, um, um, I guess, um, I'm sorry, the egress placement unit and the path out for the basement, and then just the heavy dark thing, pieces are, um, electric heat pumps. And again, as Tom said, fitting in with a super insulated building, um, and, and proposed to get to net zero, as they're hoping to have.
Thank you, Ronnie. Now, um, we're going to come back to Ronnie at the end to talk about the front porch of the main house, but before we do that, perhaps if, if there's any questions for her, before we go to our, our traffic expert to talk about, um, uh, the parking situation.
Just a quick question on the, uh, on the elevation. Just a quick question on the uh, on the elevation, the, the small black box that's hanging off the back, is that a fireplace?
No, those are, um, I'm sorry, the, to, when they get so small, you can't read them very well. These are um are, are heat pump units, Sanio units.
Okay.
Provide the heating and cooling, so they.
Yeah, no, I know what they are, okay. They're the condensing units, sure.
Yeah, the outdoor condensing. We're showing two. There is the hope that perhaps they can be consolidated into one. Uh, still working through some of that uh, HVAC engineering, but, but the hope may be to combine them into one unit, so we wouldn't have two. And I would also, I think we designed this ADU in mind to keep with the neighborhood. I know we're here for a particular variance for that, more for, for the parking, but I would say it was designed with uh, keeping the neighborhood in mind and keeping with the residential character of the neighborhood as well.
Okay, thank you.
I just had uh, one clarification. I think I noticed on the site plan two sheet, I think the five thirty-four square feet uh, for the ADU isn't, is not inclusive of the porch, just looking at the table. I, I just wanted to confirm that that's correct.
Um, I would have to go back to the table. You may be correct because we are allowed to take a two hundred square foot exemption for the porch. And I know we did that, so, sorry.
Do you want to say anything else, or should we move on?
Have a question.
I'm sorry, the proposed ADU porch area, you're correct, is not included. It is eighty-five point five square feet.
Michael?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm looking at, um, if you could put up the zoning schedule uh, site plan on the left-hand side. I have a question about the site plan.
You're talking about the actual plans or, or one of our slides?
It's uh, it's what's in your packet. I don't think you put it up there as a slide. I might not have been looking.
I haven't seen it either.
Um, I, I will do my best. I, I don't have that queued up, but uh, perhaps if you, if you ask your question and, and maybe Ronnie has the answer while I while I look for it, uh. It wasn't, it wasn't an exhibit that we prepared.
Okay, but it is part of your application. I, I have the hard copy here.
I, 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 it, it, it is. I just, I, I don't have it on my screen at the moment. I apologize.
Okay, it's uh, my question's going to be, and I, I do hope you can find it. Um, it shows the layout of where the cars will be. And I'm having trouble seeing if both cars are parked there. How do people walk from the very back of the lot to the street?
Perhaps that is an excellent um uh, segue to, to George Jacomar's testimony, because it, it, perhaps you're referring to, i- if, if, if you're not referring to the, no.
I'm, I'm not, his, his layout or, or, or pictures are much more roomy than the architect's. As far as.
Well, let's, let's go back for a second. The architect is not um, showing a car, whereas George.
Not showing what?
I'm not showing any vehicles. So all I'm showing in the X is simply the parking space that we're um, requesting. Which, which is smaller than the requirement size. So we're looking at the eight foot six by eighteen foot. That's the X and the X, which are the required size of a parking space, not a size of a car, which George will explain in much better detail.
Well, I, I think, Ryan, any, any chance you found this?
Uh, I, I have, just give me one second here, um.
Yeah, because this it's, it's two slightly different presentations.
Yeah, no, I, I noticed the same thing when I looked at the site plan. Um, yeah, you can see it clearly on this.
So I think you're referring to, that, what, what this is, this is a sheet from, from Ronnie's actual plans. This box here represents the size of a parking space, like what would be painted in, not a, not a car. Is that correct, Ronnie?
That's correct, that's what I'm saying. It's just something that Princeton would like to have a nine foot by eighteen foot parking space. And we're showing boxes that represent an eight foot six by eighteen foot parking space.
And, and Ronnie, so if this were like a parking lot at a strip mall, for example, these would be parallel and those lines would be the, the painted lines of the side of the parking space.
Correct. At this point, we are not proposing painting lines. It was just the way we graphically tried to show the parking spaces located in the, the driveway. So we're just trying to show a graphic representation of, of a box that's a parking space, not cars. We're, we're not showing that. As we said, George, George will speak to that a lot.
Car, cars are smaller than the, than the eight by eighteen, but Michael's point is very valid. There's not a lot of room back there, and um you know, parking isn't always where you want it to be. And if those cars aren't in the correct position, it's going to be very difficult to get uh, to come from the street and go to the uh, go to the unit if you're pushing a baby carriage or carrying a suitcase, or it's just very tight back there.
Thank you. Yeah.
Michael.
Ronnie, while we have this up, just for the record, which, which sheet I have up here, do you recall? Just so we can say that out loud for uh, I apologize that I've been zoomed in.
Yeah, if you know the, I think it says.
It's S, SP two.
Or SP two, okay.
Thank you. So apologies that I have to do.
Michael, are you comfortable with the answer?
Now, I under, yes, I understand why that's different from uh, Mr. Jacomars.
Okay.
Yeah.
With, with that, um, George, if you could um, introduce yourself and, and briefly go through, I know you've testified before this, this board and other boards in Princeton uh, before on, on traffic and access issues, but give through your um, your credentials and your connection to, to this case here.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning boards. Yes, my name is George Jacomar. I'm a principal of BFJ Planning. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and both licenses are up to date. I have worked in this field for more than forty years.
You, you've testified, Boris, before, so please, we will accept your credentials.
Thank you. Ryan, can we go to the next exhibit?
Absolutely. Let me just, um, apologies for the, when I switch between things, it causes the screens to all jump, so I'm going to go back to uh, the next slide in our deck here, George, for you.
So this, um, the photo on the right shows the, kind of an aerial view of the driveway. The car that you see there is on the driveway of this project, you know, facing the garage. Uh, you can see the size of the car in, in relation to the width of the driveway there. Uh, on the left, this diagram shows the, what we call the turning path. You know, that's a computer software that we use that shows how these vehicles can make the turns in and out uh, of this parking area. I'll have more detailed drawings later on, but you can see here, these two cars in their parking location, we, we recommended that the space on the left be at a slight angle because that makes it easier to get in and out, and, and especially, you know, to take advantage of the, the width that's there. It, it, it allows, you know, a little bit more room on the side of the, both cars. The cars here, we placed them in the middle of those parking stalls, and they're not, the, the drawings and the drawing is not very clear because the, the edge of the car is marked with a very thick line, and later on you'll see uh, a more detailed drawing with thinner lines that gives a better impression. But I just want to mention, you know, these spaces that we propose here, eight and a half by eighteen feet. Uh, that I would say is, and I know it's not standard in terms of your zoning code, but it tends to be a standard dimension for parking spaces in a situation where people park all day long, or it's, you know, more than four hours or six hours. You know, typical office buildings, residential developments where cars park, and they don't go in and out on an hourly basis, like in a shopping center. In a shopping center, the, the, the standard industry dimension tends to be nine by eighteen. And that's partially because, you know, we want more room there because cars go in and out more often. The drivers are not necessarily very familiar with the layout. And, you know, we want to have enough width so people that with shopping bags can get in and out. And in addition, the reason we, why in a shopping center layout, you know, where we have perpendicular parking, we have nine-foot wide stalls is because we need, we need to make it simple for cars to turn in and out, you know. They may, they need to make a ninety-degree turn to get in and out of the spaces. Here, we don't have that. The cars kind of go straight into the lot and straight out. Uh, and that's why the eight and a half width by eighteen is a very appropriate width uh, dimension for this location. Um, the other thing I want to mention is that, so these two cars can move in and out independently of each other. There's enough room for them to get in and out independently of the each other, so that's an, you know, is a plus for this particular layout. The other thing I want to mention, you know, most cars, they range in terms of width. They range in the, you know, between five point eight feet and six point six feet. So, you know, most cars are, you know, six feet and a half. The widest SUVs that we have are six feet and nine inches. And so even if you have an SUV in there, there is still room left, you know, between the eight and a half and the six feet, nine inches. Not a lot of room, but there is room left. And so the answer to the question that was raised earlier by Mr. Floyd, how do we control the dimension, you know, the, the size of the vehicles? We, we, we don't. Um, we know that somebody who has a very large SUV will have, you know, more difficulty getting in and out. Which is true for, you know, many locations. It's not just true for here, but it's, you know, if you do drive a very large SUV, you, you will be in situations a little bit more difficult. So here we show the dimension of a Nissan Pathfinder. Uh, the next graphic um, next exhibit. Uh, here we have another photo that shows the two garages as they are today. And the, the driveway, and I think what's important also is that the little wall that you see on the left side, if I understand correctly from the architect, that law wall will be eliminated. So that makes it easier to get in and out. There's less of a risk that you, you know, bang your car against that little wall. So that's, I think, is, is a good improvement. The next graphic then shows a more detailed drawing. Here we show a Honda um, Accord. So that's a kind of mid-sized car. And what we do here, what you can see, the lines are a little bit more visible. The car is placed towards the left of the parking stall. So this is a kind of position that the driver would take if there is a passenger in the car, and then the passenger needs to get out on the passenger side. You know, the driver can shift the car a little bit to the left, and that creates, that leaves enough room for the passengers to get in and out. And as you can see, the driver as well has room to get in and out because of that room between the two spaces. So there is flexibility in the sense that if you have, and so this is considered a mid-sized car, that this, the Honda Accord has a width of six point one foot uh, width. So there is plenty of width. You know, the space here between the car and the right edge of the parking lot is between is more than two feet. It's two feet and I think four inches uh, width there, enough to open the door. Um, and, and as you know, is shown in the drawing, we do, I think this the applicant agrees to put a fence here or some kind of railing, so that the door that opens will not uh, cross over the property line. The property line, I think, is, you know, to the right of that parking stall. And, you know, the, the applicant agrees to put the fence in there so that there is no such issue. As, and that's, you can see it in the photo, has been overlaid, and that would be maybe sixteen feet long. You know, just to prevent any doors, whether it's a door in the front or in the back, you know, from swinging over the property line. Um, so that's my testimony. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I do. Just one, one, one for me, well, I'll, I'll actually, I'll, I'll let you. So, um, George, then, then, one, um, y- your understanding is that there's room on our side of the property line to uh, to place a fence if the board, um, or any neighbors would prefer that, um, without restricting um, the ability of a car to get back there or encroaching on that property line. Is that your understanding?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, and, and also, if you could talk a little bit about, while we've, while boxed in here are the two parking spaces, I don't know if we've talked at all about this extra space in between, um, that is not technically part of the parking spaces, but allows some additional maneuver, maneuverability. Is there any? I know you talked about the angled left space in terms of uh, um, making it easier to back in and out, and I think your testimony was that there you, you've shown that that's not a problem getting in and out, but does it, does that angle also give the advantage of, of perhaps some additional maneuver, uh, space for pedestrians between the two spaces?
Yes, you can see between the two cars in the back, you know, it is, it is in the back, you know, it gets a little bit tighter, but there is enough room for a person to pass. But I think more importantly here, it's to the left of the car that's on the left side. That's where I think people would pass, because if I understand it correctly, the, the entrance to the AD, ADU unit would be on the left side of the unit, so the pedestrians would walk on the left side of that left-hand car.
What about the, what about on the, on the left-hand side of the left-hand car?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
So they're going to walk between the car and the back corner of the house?
The, between the car and that staircase that you can see there.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the, the car that's shaded.
Right.
Where I can, that, and then, so if somebody getting out of the driver's side would walk between the front of that vehicle and the corner of the house.
Correct.
That's pretty tight. George, wouldn't, wouldn't this, this left space be the one for the for the main house that would actually go up these stairs at the bottom left here, right? That, that, because this is a, the, the applicant is uh, going to be renting these spaces out, they'd be able to assign them, and is your understanding that, that they particularly, um, we didn't mention the EV chargers, but uh the thought was that this one on the left would, would probably have an EV hookup to the house, and the one back here would be EV hooked up to the um to the ADU, and so the obvious kind of location for assigned spots would be the one on the right to the ADU and the one on the left closer to the door to the main house, is that?
Yes, that's correct.
It's still pretty snug if somebody in the house comes down the steps and wants to go to the backyard. But it's, it's, it's a workable situation dimensionally. But in reality, given how people park, I mean, I, I can appreciate exactly what Mr. Jacomar said. He's, I believe he's right. Um, but you're relying on people to park the way you're imagining it would work. So it's, it's still going to be a little tight back there, but it is dimensionally workable.
I, I have a question for um, for your tar, parking, which is um namely, one way or the other, you're going to be backing along a long driveway. And I'm wondering, I know most cars now have rearview screens, but is there some way to visually emphasize the boundary so you don't sort of wander off that driveway? My second question is if you back out into the street and there's cars parked on the street, that can be very dangerous. Um, so either you back out into the street or you back all the way, you know, back to your parking space. One way or the other, you're going to be backing a long way.
You're, you're correct, and that is an existing condition, you know, that is the same today, and it's the same for the neighbor's house that we look at. You know, that is a condition that exists today, and um, I think the one thing that will help, obviously, you know, that little um, uh, what is it, this, this it's not a wall, the, the, the pave, the area with those rocks between the two properties will help, obviously, to maintain the driver that's going in reverse on the path, you know, on the driveway. And then the other thing that I think is good uh, in this case is that little wall on the left that you see there will be taken down, so that, you know, if the, if the car doesn't maneuver correctly that they don't, at least don't get a scratch, and so that they will notice when they do uh, back up here that, you know, the tire will That, you know, the tire will either, you know, hit that, those rocks, the granite that you see, uh. On the right side and whatever will be on the left side without scratching the car.
Where, where does the property line sit in that little paved, uh, little stone area between the two driveways?
Um, does the architect know the answer to that?
Yes, it's, it's point two off, off. So it's, it's pretty much just on the, I would. I don't know the exact thickness of that curb, but I would say it's just on that other side. Um. The driveway is roughly two and a half inches off the property line.
So it's, it's that whole paved area primarily is, is the neighbors.
Correct.
All right. It is a, it is a very long driveway. It presents a problem in backing up, but again, that's existed for many, many years. So. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, board members? Okay, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. And I, I, with apologies for bouncing around, we'll bring Ronnie back just to talk about the, to kind of end with the front porch. Um, so, uh, Ronnie, I guess on the left, we've got the, you know, what the home looks like now and what will continue to look like. The supports that we're talking about. And on the right, the, can you talk a little bit about the floor plan and the, and the reasoning for. Um, changing where the door is to the existing front entry porch.
Sure. So the idea is with, what people like to have today is a more up, modern, open floor plan. Um, where these new windows are going is about where the door was, where it says from here. So that would put you, it, it does this now. You walk right into the living room. Houses have that. It, it, it works. It's just not the most desirable way to enter a home. So this way you would come up onto the porch. It'd be obvious that the door is to your right. And you come into what is sort of naturally a vestibule. Uh, with the bay window, your stairs there going up, and then you walk into the big open space. So it just makes for a more, uh, an easy of the house. Um, not interrupting, you know, the living room. And, um, I, as again, back to the point of it's twenty-six feet from the sidewalk to the porch. And everything is in a line, the sidewalk, the steps, there's the porch. So again, walking by, you're still going to see the door on that side. Coming from one direction, from the other you will not, but you certainly won't mistake where you should be going to enter the home.
So, so Ronnie, while the front door doesn't necessarily face directly the street, the, the entrance though, in your mind, is that that front porch? Is that the entrance and the, the steps and porch as an entrance still does relate and, and, and face the street?
Right. So the front porch itself is relating to the street. The steps down to the sidewalk relate to the street. And obviously the sidewalk itself leads to the public way and to the street. So all of that very much relates to the street. Um, so again, back to the point of I don't think anyone will find it difficult to know where the front door is. It, it relates very well to the street. Again, twenty-six feet away, which is not much.
I have two, two quick questions. Um, one is just a comment. There's no closets on the first floor. That I can see, but that's, that's neither here nor there. That's your decision.
Those little pegs behind the fridge there, Steve?
Behind the.
Where it says refrigerator, R E F.
Oh, yeah.
And, and move it. There's our little pegs in our, in our mudroom. So there is.
Oh, in the mudroom. Okay. And is there a door? Is there a door in the back to the backyard?
There is. Um, if we go back a slide or two, Ryan. Um, but maybe, yeah, it's right there where Ryan. So this is a, um. A patio door here and a people door there that goes.
Yeah, there's, those are the steps that are shown and.
Correct.
Yeah. You're directing people to access the backyard. That area could be a little tight, but. It's, it's again, like I said, dimensionally workable. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, unless there's any other, um, questions for, for Ronnie, I'm happy to, to summarize.
And board members, do you have any questions or the witnesses before Mr. Kennedy summarizes? You can take the screen share down.
No. Thank you, everyone. Um. The two groups of variances here.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Doesn't the audit, ordinance say that the total square footage has to be eight hundred square feet or less?
Yes. And we are at seven hundred and ninety-six.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kennedy, go ahead.
Uh, with that, just want to thank the board for hearing us tonight. Um, a, a couple of key points about the, the two buckets of variances. First on, on the parking side, um, uh, this is an undersized lot. Uh, most of lots in this neighborhood are undersized by width. We're, we're ten feet short of what otherwise sixty-foot lot is, is a. A small lot to begin with and, and most of lots, including ours, are small. So the idea of a. Long, narrow driveway is unfortunately, uh, the commonplace, uh, in, in Princeton and these neighborhoods. And that's an existing condition. We're not looking to move the driveway, you know, closer to neighbor or, or make those changes. It's really just. The, the use. And I, I think we've gone through, um, a, a considerable effort to show. Um, that two cars work quite well back there, um, with the, uh, variances requested. So that those variances are the existing location of the driveway, um, which is unchanged. It's an existing condition. Um, and then, uh, the parking stall sizes and the, the testimony that we had from our traffic expert. Is that there is significant, um, room, uh, back there, uh, with those, uh, compact sized stalls. And by the way, Princeton does allow compact sized stalls. It's just that for, it's, it's within the context of, uh, larger developments. Where only a certain percentage, like fifteen percent of the spaces could be compact. Well, here fifteen percent of, of two is. Not something that makes any sense. So we have two essentially sub-small, um, slightly smaller, uh, six inches in one direction and one foot in the other. Uh, uh, stalls that we've got the turning radiuses that show that you can both get back there. Um, and that someone can, uh, can realistically, um, get in and out of those vehicles on a regular basis. We also suggested, and it's up to the board, um, what you'd like us to do, but we would be willing and could fit. Um, kind of an extension of the existing fence that's between the back, uh, two properties or of another type, frankly. Uh, along our part of the property, uh, on our property, uh, that, that neither diminishes the amount of space available to. That parking spot and would essentially physically ensure that someone wouldn't, you know, park too close to it and swing their door into the neighbor's property. Now, we're not looking to, um, to cause a problem for, for anyone. We want to contain our parking, frankly, uh, on our lot. Um, and because, um, these would be rented, it's the intention of the, the applicant to assign spaces, actually. And we'll have a little bit more control over what they're doing back there because they will be, uh, lease agreements, uh, that do that. So that's on the parking side. And we had, uh, uh, some expert testimony on that. Um, the ADU is compliant. Um. I won't rehash the environmentally friendly things. I'm, I'm lucky to have a client that likes to do those things with solar panels and. Uh, electric heat pumps, uh, at, for, for the project. Um, but ultimately what they're doing back there is, is allowed as of right. Um, and, uh, ultimately, uh, the, the only other variance we're talking about, um, which we think is more likely. Well, the parking variances probably are, are more in your C one, um, uh, on the hardship side because we are frankly, an undersized lot. Um, we hope you agree with our architect, just that the orientation of the, the front porch access. Just makes more sense this way. And the, the, the goals of that ordinance to have a house and the door or the entrance, the door, the door isn't included. But to have the entrance way and the, the house itself orient and face the street. Remain the same before and after. It just, it's a better use of the space to allow a, a, a side kind of turn. Uh, rather than dumping frankly, uh, visitors and, and, uh, right directly into the, the main bulk of the open space of the home. Um, uh, with that, um, again, I'm very appreciative of your time here tonight. Um, and of course, we're, uh, able to answer the other questions you might have. Thank you.
Right, Ryan, um, there's one minor comment I would like to add. What we are proposing is not compact spaces. Now, the eight and a half wide space is not a compact. Compact spaces are narrower than that. So what we're proposing is a, a standard space, uh, that is, you know, less than the zoning standard. But a, a very standard space for this type of parking. For instance, the, these parking spaces are larger than. Or they, I think the same size as they are in the township parking lot. And they're definitely larger than they were in the old municipal, the borough parking lot. Uh, I remember measuring those so many years ago. So they are standard spaces. They are not compact parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you, George. I appreciate that clarification.
What is a compact parking space?
If I remember, it, it's, it tends to be seven and a half feet wide and fifteen feet long.
Seven and a half by fifteen?
Yes. I think that I, you know, it could be seven and a half or eight, but it depends on where you are, you know, there isn't.
By fifteen.
Yeah. Seven and a half by fifteen, yes.
I've never seen it. I've never seen any municipality allow a seven and a half foot space. But that you're not proposing, you're not proposing seven and a half, so that's fine.
Yeah.
Um, one quick question, the, the paved area, uh, the edge of the driveway is point two feet. From the property line. So that's two and a half inches. And so you're going to put a, you'll put a fence in that two and a half inches if, if that's what you're proposing.
So we, we looked at it. It's essentially the width of the, uh, the Belgian block that's on our property line. We essentially take the, you know. Remove a block and, and put a post kind of in, in the width of that current, uh, Belgian block curving. So there, there's room for a, for that there.
Okay. All right. Um, at this point, yes, Michael.
I have, I have a question. Um, and I think I'll direct it at Derek. To start with, and Mr. Kennedy, if you want to weigh in also, and it's regarding the parking. Um. And whether a variance is needed. For that smaller space, if the driveway can accommodate two cars. And sort of the space we're talking about. Is, you know, is, is in the interior of the lot. You can park, can't they park a car there as of right without any variance? And. Uh. It doesn't violate any setbacks?
No, I mean, if they meet the four-foot setback, yeah, they could park there. If that's your question.
Uh, yeah, without designating that as a specific parking spot.
I, I mean, the ordinance speaks about unobstructed, uh, access. So, I mean, when you have one family and you have. A two-car requirement, it makes sense to be in a driveway, but you have two living units. I think it, you know, the ordinance. Speaks about having each car being able to get in and out without having the other one moved. So I think that's.
And, and does that relate to accessory dwellings, dwelling units too?
I mean, it's a unit. I'm thinking, you know, they should be able to each get in and out of their house without having the neighbor move their space. If we have control of it. I mean, there's a lot of situations in town where that's not the case, but.
Yeah.
They, they've asked for the consideration and, you know, it makes sense.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Mr. Mr. Floyd, maybe putting it another way, just piggybacking on what, what Derek said. Um, we, we asked for the variance for this configuration side by side essentially, which requires the, the small tweak to the, the standard. Stall size. I, I think you probably agree that most residential homes around Princeton, no one is measuring the size of their stalls and they're just kind of using them. Another way to look at this though, is that if, if you were to, uh, and, and likely people are going to park side by side anyway, regardless of the side. Cause that's the, the, what's going to be convenient and functional. But we, we didn't ask for a variance for the stack parking. I guess we could have essentially asked, instead of for this configuration. Asked for a variance to, to, to stack them essentially, uh, as well. Um, you know, that's, it's almost six of one, half dozen of the other. We felt that this worked and functionally, this is what people would do. And frankly, we would prefer as tenants to have them not have to. Jockey cars, but you know, I, I, that happens probably all across Princeton, uh, on a, on a very regular basis with these narrow driveways. But that's not the variance that we asked for. Perhaps you could grant that, but that's, we, we, we would prefer. And the way we looked at it happens to be these two variances this way.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that you would need a variance for stack parking.
Okay, um. Any other questions, board members? Okay, Mr. Kennedy, we're, we're going to, go into, uh, we're going to open this up to the public. Do you want to say anything again in lieu of the comments?
Uh, just, just to thank you all again for your time tonight. Uh, really appreciative. This has been a, honestly, a pretty interesting conversation about how these, how these driveways work. So I appreciate the, the thought of tonight.
No problem. Okay, um, we're going to open, open up the conversation to the public. If there's anybody in the ordinary, audience. We'd like to make a comment on this project, indicate that by, at the bottom of your screen, raising your hand and we'll recognize you to speak. Claudia, do we have anyone who's indicated they would like to speak?
Yes, Mr. Brushai and Mr. Perron.
Okay, please call on one of them.
Mr. Perron, your house, your hand is raised.
Hi, can you folks hear me?
I can. Mr. Perron, if you're comfortable, can you give us your address?
Sure. Uh, it's one oh five and a half Linden Lane. I'm the owner of that property. I'm on the right side of the driveway. That we've been looking at.
Do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
So my concern with, I have two questions and I, and I just want to confirm the first one is that some of the plans I've been looking at. Showed the driveway at one oh five Linden Lane, uh, being right up against the property line. Is that the case or is it going to remain where it is existing today?
Remaining where it exists.
Okay, great. So my second question is, how, how are folks going to exit the vehicle on the right-hand side of that driveway? Without entering onto my property on the passenger side?
Perhaps, George, we can have you, um, address that.
Yeah, um, the, if there is a passenger there, um, which will not always be the case. Uh, the driver will, especially if the fence is built that we propose as a mitigation measure. The driver will know that it is going to be tight and the driver will slightly move the car to the left to make. So that there's enough room on the right to open the door. The drawing that we showed. And, uh, I don't know if, uh, we can show that again, uh, showed that car. And that was a, a kind of a medium size. This is a medium-sized car. It's a Honda Accord. And you can see it's placed, uh, on the left side of that space. Uh, and there's more than two feet there. It's two feet and three inches, uh, to open the door. And to get in and out on the passenger side.
Right.
Um, and there's room on the left as well.
Or if, if, so I, I think you said earlier that no one can really control what type of a car someone is going to have, right? At that property, they could have a, um, a Chevy Suburban, something larger. Um, what is the swing on that door if it's parked in that configuration? Will it, will it, will it breach my property line? Do you know that?
It may reach the property line and that's why we propose, you know, to install a fence so that, you know, when the door opens. The only, the door will only be opening up to a certain point, but you can see from the drawing, there's enough room for a person to get in and out.
Do you have a dimension on that drawing, George? Is there, is there a dimension showing two Chevy Suburbans parked side by side in that, in that driveway?
I don't think that we're going to have two Chevy Suburbans parking at the same time. Well, they're very. Well, no, uh, statistically, I would say it's.
Are you going to guarantee that? Are you going to guarantee that as a developer, going to guarantee that there are not going to be two Chevy Suburbans parked in that driveway side by side? And that in fact, when the passenger opens their door, it's not going to overhang into my property?
If we put a fence, well, okay, we can guarantee it, but I can tell you that statistically, the chances for two. Very large Suburbans to park side by side are very, very slim. They're very, very.
I'm hearing there's no guarantee.
I'll, I'll represent that, um, the fence will guarantee that no one will. I'll, I'll represent that, um, the fence will guarantee that no one will open a door across your property line.
Yes.
Right, Ryan, are you running that fence? Are you running that fence the entire length of the property?
Uh, our proposals run at the length of the parking space. If, if there's something different that you'd like, we, we'd be happy to consider it.
My, my question would be if, if these, if the occupants have visitors, right? And they would pull into the driveway, how would they exit their car without entering my property? So I think the fence would have to go the entire length of the property to prevent that.
I, I suppose it'd be the same way that someone would do that on, on the, the neighboring property. It's really, once you leave that, that corner. It is the same condition essentially.
The neighboring property is a single-family home. Right? There's no ADU on that property. There's no requirement for that. So it's a different scenario than what you're proposing. So my, my suggestion to the developer, and I think this would be worthwhile for everyone to consider. Is to move the ADA, the ADU to the opposite side of the property. Uh, to extend the driveway further down to where the garage is currently and provide enough circulation for people. To exit their cars appropriately. That would solve everything I think we're talking about tonight.
Developer considered paving the entirety of the backyard like that and, and we prefer this, um, scenario.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the entire, it wouldn't be the entire backyard. It would simply be enough to get a car further forward. To let a passenger out and not have any constraints. Uh, it's, it's certainly doable. And you're, you're, you're gonna demolish the garage, so that's gonna go away. And you're starting from scratch, so starting on one side of the property, the other is really inconsequential. But it would afford you a more appropriate parking area, right? That would avoid larger cars being parked there.
It does a couple of things. It does add more impervious coverage. And it does take away, um, any semblance of a backyard.
Monica, have you, have you, have you laid that out on a site plan to, to understand what that would look like?
Yes.
Do you have that available to look at here?
Because we didn't want to go that direction, but we did.
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's an important consideration, considering that what's at stake here with, with my property.
No, then we'd also.
It's certainly workable, right? It's certainly a workable option. It would be a minimal impact. You're talking just a couple of feet to get a car up to open that door.
Thank you for that. I mean, we, we looked at that extensively and, um, particularly with the fence that would keep a door from crossing into your property. This is the.
I don't think you, have you committed to extending that fence the entire length of the property?
Is that your preference?
Well, I, I, I'm just, my, my concern is, is car doors and people spilling onto my property. So I think that, you know, based on what you're proposing here, you need to solve for that.
Well, there only, again, my comment is, is a fence would do that. Um, it still requires the variances they're looking for, but a fence would limit how a door would swing and how people would, uh, pass by. And the other would be a change in the design, which is purely up to the developer at this point.
And I, I will say that we would be willing to extend the fence further, um, you know, absolutely, you know, we, we, again, our, our goal is to. You know, we, I think we've shown that this is, this works physically, um, supports the variance and. Uh, they'll be owning this and living here and, and having tenants that live here, and we wanna make sure that they don't interfere with your, your tenants there. So we'll make sure that, that, I think a fence is a good way to do that. That's not gonna allow any doors onto your property.
Right, so Ryan, you're proposing you would extend that to the, to the end of the property of the driveway, right, from the. Is that what you're saying?
We, we would, we're happy, why don't you tell us what you would, how far you'd like it to go and then we could see if that makes sense. We, our proposal was to have it just where the parking area is, cause that's where, where there would be two cars side by side.
So it would go to the end of the property towards Linden Lane. There's an existing fence that runs between the two properties currently. You would extend that fence on your side of the property. All the way to where, to where your, your property line ends on Linden Lane.
Um, perhaps a, a good way to, place to stop is that there's, no one is allowed to park in the front yard setback, so perhaps we take it to that. House line, uh, where no one would be able to park from in front of, uh, there's technically no parking in the front.
Well, you can park on your property, I'm assuming, so it would go to the end of the property line.
No, we're willing to put a fence to the, to the extent that, to the place that the board thinks is appropriate. I'll be honest, that, that, the applicant is very flexible on this. Well, there, I don't wanna be arbitrary by saying something, but.
Well, there, there's a real issue with people parking in the driveway and spilling onto my property. Okay.
An issue currently?
Pardon me?
I'm, I'm sorry, an issue currently with that happening?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Well, also, Ryan, I, I think what we're trying to also solve for here is you're adding, you're adding an ADU to the property, right? So I think we're all cognizant that you're adding additional occupants to the property. And we're talking, we're having this meeting tonight because part of what you're proposing is having two cars parked side by side on that property. And the situation that's creating. Is bringing cars tight to the property line and they're gonna spill onto my property and, and, and there's a risk associated with that. That's the concern.
No, thank you.
Yes, um, George, did you wanna say something? Okay. Any other?
The other part to this, folks, would be is if I decided to put a fence on my property. Having the cars in such close proximity is gonna result in damage to a fence I would put up. So it's really creating a pinch point here and, uh, is a real issue. So I, you know, I, I, um, you know, this condition didn't exist in the past. It's a real issue and a real concern for me. And, uh, you know, I, I think that the, that the, the zoning committee should take this into account. And, you know, my, my recommendation is to either have the developer run a fence to the end of the property at Linden Lane. Uh, or move the building to the, to the other side of the property. You're creating a situation where I'm at risk. There's liability to me. Uh, there could be damage to my vehicles parked in that driveway if they open the door too far. People can spill onto my property. Twist an ankle, sue me, I have no idea, but this is creating an undue liability to me.
Okay, that's valid. I think your concerns are noted.
I do have a, a question and it kind of dovetails, um, with Mr. Perron's question. Cause it's about parking in the driveway and whatnot, um. How do you control, and I guess it's on the developer owner. That the ADU. Or the ADU and, um, also the, the main house. Don't generate more than two cars. They could generate four cars. Unless you're just not gonna rent the ADU to someone with two cars. Have, have you thought about or discussed that?
The, because it is, um, gonna be rented by, uh, by the, by the applicant. Um, that, those are options, you know, including. And they backed into this because of how the EV charges would work, but that one space would be assigned to the ADU. That would be the right side space and the left side space would be assigned to their applicant. The leases can say, and the applicant is proposing to do this frankly, that each one only can have one car. It's, um, fairly simple to do that, uh, in terms of lease, and that's, that's how they were planning to operate the property. Um, and, you know, they have a little bit more flexibility, uh, because it is leased. But ultimately, you know, if you look up and down the street, that, that is the condition that you see, you know, the, the, the requirement is to have a space. Uh, and, you know, we have one extra space to require that, you know, no other, uh, property on the street does. We're actually kind of one better than the other conditions by having that other space there. But to your point, um, that actually can be addressed in the lease here and that each one will, will have one space assigned to them.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess the difference is, Ryan, the other homes are all single-family homes.
Sorry, are we, are we, have we finished the public comment or, or, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure where we are in the hearing here now?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that, um. You know, obviously, if you're gonna limit it to one, and I'm, I'm not saying you should or shouldn't. But if you're gonna limit it to one car per, you know, household. By lease and you're committing to that or want to commit it, I don't wanna make it for you. Um, fine, otherwise, you know, like everywhere, parking, people park when. Where they want to in long driveways. Fine, that's, that was just my question, you know.
Thank you.
The main house could have two cars. Which is permitted.
Very possibly, you're right.
You know, and, uh. And the ADU can have two cars. They just, you're just putting, designating the minimum of at least one. But, you know, with the square footage. You're allowed to do in the ADU. It could very easily be a couple with two cars. Okay.
Right. Uh, do you have any other comments?
Mr. Perron?
Mr. Perron, do you have any other comments?
I, I would say, you know, Stephen, to, to further Michael's comments of how many cars are gonna park in this driveway. Look, my, my intent here is solely to protect my property, right? And by adding the ADU, and I'm not opposing the ADU, okay? Uh, what I'm opposing here is what the ADU is creating in terms of parking. And the, and, and, and the vulnerability I have on my property of folks, you know, visitors, et cetera, pulling into the driveway. Not paying attention, spilling onto my property, um, injuring themselves and the liability that I, that I would, would, would take on from this arrangement. So, um, I, I would hope that the committee, uh, consider either having the prop, the ADU move to the opposite side of the property. And creating additional parking area or having the, or some sort of, uh, you know, a fence or a barrier running from the, the, the length of the property. To se- separate our, our, our two properties and prevent people from, from doing that. And, um, I appreciate your time. Uh, you know, my parents built the house, uh, in nineteen fifty. Uh, I purchased it from my parents' estate two years ago. Uh, I own the property. My son is living there. Uh, my long-term plan at some point is, is to return to Princeton and, and live in the house when I retire. Uh, so it's something that I'm holding on to as, um, as an asset. So, um, I love the town of Princeton. I went to high school there and I wish not, and, and my vested interest is in seeing Princeton flourish.
Thank you. Uh, your comments were very, were noted. I mean, I understand your concern and I think it's valid, quite frankly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Claudia, um, anyone else indicated they'd like to speak?
Mr. Broschai.
A name I sound familiar.
Probably too familiar for some of you.
If you're comfortable, do you could just tell us, do you live in Princeton now or outside of Princeton?
I'm outside of Princeton. I live in.
And do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, mostly because it's gonna be just opinion. Um, first of all, um, you know, I think, uh, some of the comments that Mark made were, were good. I've known Mark since, uh, he was about, uh. Two years old and my mother-in-law owned, uh, the property at one oh five Linden Lane for seventy years. Moved out a couple of years ago. And so calling more, um, just from an information and, and a nosy standpoint. Um, you know, to see what's going on with the, with the property, heard about the ADU and so forth. And, um, I'll just make a couple of points. One is that Mark's concern, I think, can really be addressed. Uh, when that wall comes out, that little retaining wall at the end, that is. A huge obstacle to making the driveway more functional. There's two parking places up at the end where, uh, George has said it's tight parking. It is tight parking. I've been in and out of that driveway. You know, two thousand times, um, you know, when, uh, my mother-in-law lived there, we would go to visit. We would try to double park up at the top. It is tight, but it is doable, much more doable when that wall comes down. Um, you know, so if you were to provide a fence that goes down, you know, to within where the site triangle is or whatever your legal requirements are. It's a much more doable solution if that wall is out, which you're, which I think on the plan you said you were gonna take out. Regardless of it, it makes the ingress and egress out of the driveway that much easier. Um, you know, the other thing I would just comment on, then, you know, I went over with my, uh, my wife and my, uh. Um, sister-in-law today was that, you know, we are happy that you're trying to save as much of the backyard as possible. So, you know, I kinda lean towards, you know, if you can put the fence up to accommodate, uh, Mark's concern, which I think again are, are, are valid. Um, I think that does solve that and it will, you know, keep the fig tree alive, which in our family is a huge thing, the fig tree. Um, you know, so, uh, I'll leave it at that. Um, otherwise, I think the, you know, the plan addresses. A lot of things from a lot of different, uh, concerns. So all you, the only concern left is to try to address the Mark Perron's concern from next door. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Claudia, is there anyone else indicated they'd like to speak?
There are no more hands.
Okay, hearing none. We'll close the public portion of the hearing. Once again, Mr. Kennedy, would you like to say anything before we go into executive session?
I just wanna thank everyone tonight, uh, including, uh, uh, Mark, the, the, the neighbor for, for, you know. The, the time here tonight and, and I'll again say, um, the applicant is, is willing to put up a fence as far down that lot line as makes the board. Um, I don't know if we make everyone happy perfectly, but ultimately, um, uh, the board feels comfortable with asking for, um, with input from the neighbor. Frankly, we're willing to go as far down as we think is, um, makes sense. I think at some point you get close enough to the street that perhaps. Um, uh, offenses is not the best idea, but, but ultimately we'd be willing to, to do, um, what the board, um, and its, uh, professionals. Think, you know, with all the input that they heard tonight, we, we, um, we feel that, you know, with the testimony tonight, um, which was. I'll say, um, for, for a, a case like this, perhaps, um, it may not totally unusual, but, you know, we, we did put a lot of thought into. Engineering and making sure that we were comfortable and this board could be comfortable, um, that this site works. Both from getting in and out, and there was testimony in that, and in physically getting in and out of the cars, um, once you're there. And, and as an ultimate kind of guarantee to, to bottle up that issue if there is one, and I think the testimony one was that there isn't. Um, that a, a fence would, would not just, um, keep the parking situation, because we're really only talking about the part where there is parking. Um, the rest of the driveway and the drive itself is an existing condition, but extending it further does address perhaps some of the existing condition. That if you were to look up and down the street and see, um, stacked visitor cars, um, at other properties or even this one, uh, currently. Um, a fence going further down would address that issue for, for visitors or the, the current, um, condition. And that, that applicant would be perfectly happy, uh, to do that if that's what the, the board thinks makes the, the, this application, um, work. And, and satisfy, um, the neighboring property. That's, that's ultimately what we're looking, uh, looking to do here. Um, so, uh, with that on the parking and I'll, I'll, I, I know we didn't spend much time talking about the front door. I, it sounds like that. Um, you guys agree with us that that orientation makes sense and does fit the spirit of, of what, um, addressing the street. Is, is, is meant to entail. Um, uh, but again, with that, I, I really wanna thank you for your time. Um, as, as ADUs do go forward, we're gonna be talking about this more. I'm hoping that it gets a little simpler and that not every application with ADU needs to bring in. You know, a, a, a regional traffic parking expert for each lot, you know, it is, it is challenging. Um, this applicant did go and, and, and make sure, you know, and, and check all the boxes to make sure that, um, they were comfortable. And that you could be comfortable with doing it. And I, I think we're gonna see more of it. That's the reality of these narrow lots. And, and no one really looks at it when it's a single-family home and will look at it now, cause it, it is a variance. But in this case, we, you know, we brought in the, the, the information so that we hope that you can be comfortable with the, with the situation. So with that, um, very appreciative of your time as always and, and thank you so much.
You're welcome. The, um, your comment about, uh, the changing nature of these applications is valid. Because now with ADUs, it's, uh, it presents a whole different situation in single-family areas. Okay, um, we've heard everything, we've heard the neighbors, um, board members, questions, comments, motions? Michael?
Yeah, um, you know, we, we discussed the, the driveway. Um, unfortunately for me, um, you know, the, the attorney, Mr. Kennedy, said he's kind of taking a read that we have no problem with the entrance way. I actually do, I think the code is very clear that the front entrance, quote unquote, shall be oriented towards the street. It's very, very clear to me. And to take a complying condition and making it a non-complying in need of a variance is not something I'm gonna vote for. Regarding the driveway, I think, you know, Mr. Bridgers', uh, memo had the note in there. It was a concern, the setback. I'm very happy to hear the fence that the applicant is willing to do, to help address the neighbor's concern. I hadn't thought of that, because a, a fence will probably also restrict his use to his property, because the driveways are pretty close to one width. Um, but I understand, um, with this increased activity, with the addition of the permitted ADU, I have no problem with the ADU, but it's increased activity, it is a concern, so the fence really helps. Um, I do like the current layout. It would be hard to move it to the other side, since this house already has, looks like an extension uh, that was added, so it's, it, it doesn't work on the other side to me. And this is the best place to put it. Appreciate all these sustainable and environmental things. And I think I'll stop there, so I, I, I don't support the entrance way. I do support, um, the variances, other variants for the parking spot and the, um, setback. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, just a, a comment, Michael, I, I, uh, I generally agree with what you said. The only thing about the front door, I can appreciate, um, what the architect said, um, in terms of how the house would function as a big open space and entering into the side, which creates a unimplied sort of vestibule. It just makes furnishing a lot easier than going straight into the living room. That's, it's a, it's a minor...
Here's a problem for me, and sometimes when I'm looking at drawings on any application, unless it's directly related to what's being built outside and it, it doesn't work type of thing, yeah. But I don't think we're to be too concerned with the applicant's layout preferences. That, that doesn't support or defeat, it doesn't come into play on why do something.
No, no, no.
As far as the variance.
I, I agree with you, the ordinance is the ordinance. I'm just creating, I'm just creating a rationale, but if the, if the ordinance creates a problem and it's enough of a problem, then the ordinance should be changed, but notwithstanding that it is the ordinance. And I, I agree with you there. I think the fence is, although I'm not a, a fan of fences, it, it solves the problem. And I think the fence solves, solves the problem that the neighbor has with liability, which I think in this day and age is very valid. Okay.
Yeah. I, I have a question about them, which is, um, because these are narrow lots, you know, a fence four, five, six feet high, oh, the length of the driveway accentuates the narrowness of the lot. And so, I'm wondering if the same effect of preventing, um, people opening their door and stepping onto the neighbor's property could be achieved with a fence, perhaps two and a half feet or maybe, maybe three feet, but, you know, put some essentially that, that there's no requirement the fence be very high. That, that, that would satisfy, um, the objections raised by the neighbor. And yet...
I, I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, I was gonna ask Derek, Derek, uh, don't you need a variance to go over four feet for the fence anyway?
It's six feet.
It's six feet, okay.
I think most fences are standard forty-two inches or forty-eight, or the, the lowest you can get. There might be thirty-six, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Um, board members, any other comments?
Also, I think, yeah, I think the fence is a, is a workable solution for the, uh, keeping people from, uh, moving onto the adjacent property. Um, it is a narrow space, I was kinda thinking that maybe you could do a, a very narrow hedge, um, that might be a little bit, you know, nicer looking than a, you know, vertical fence in that area, probably irrigate it in order to make it to grow. But you could basically create a, a living fence that would separate those two properties and would serve the same function and be a little more aesthetically pleasing possibly. Also thinking that, um, uh, certainly with that fence up, people could probably, passengers could get out of the car before you pull all the way forward to the ADU. Might be a little easier for them to get out of the car than walk in. So, I think the fence would actually change behavior in a positive way to get people to, you know, to, to exit their vehicles before they get all the way to the very end where it gets as narrow as possible. And also, they're, they're, they're parking next to the other car. So, I think the, the fence could serve a couple purposes, both when it's cars fully in and also just changing behavior for some people, exit the car as a passenger, um, on the way up the driveway. Uh, on the, the front door is, I'm, I'm a little split between that. I think that it makes sense from a practical standpoint, um, and then how it plays into the ordinance, I think is, um, I'm, I'm gonna listen to what the other board members think about that and see if, um, if it's something that, uh, we should uphold or whether I think, um, you know, the functionality that it provides would be a benefit and, and applicable for us to approve.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I'll weigh in at this point, because I, Michael, I, when you say that you don't wanna, it, it almost sounds like what you're saying is that you would be willing to consider it if it was, if it was a pre, like, if it's a pre-existing condition, then we would, we would potentially allow that change. But since it's...
I didn't say that, but that's...
No, I, I'm trying to under, I'm saying, you didn't say that, but it... It, it sounds like, well, if it's, if it's, what was the word? Uh, if it's legitimate for it to be where it is, then to move it, I'm not using the right lingo, but, um, tell me how you said it again, if you don't mind.
I said, basically, I said, the, the code asks for the front entrance to be oriented towards the street. It's, it's not about the porch, um, at all, as far as what the code says. And I have trouble, well, I can easily go with the...
What, how do you define that? Is it the door?
Do you want me to explain or not?
I do, I do.
Okay. Then, what I said was to change a compliant entrance to a non-compliant requiring a variance. And I also said, we really don't have, in my opinion, I'm not talking about this application in general. I don't look at, in detail, at drawings, because what someone wants to do within their house is their business. And I try not to let that influence what I decide to vote on exterior variances and the code. Does that, you understand that?
Yes.
Makes perfect sense.
So, it, it does, though, now raise the question of what is the meaning of the word entrance here? Does that equate door or does that mean an area that is considered the entrance? I, I'm, that, I'm, it's a question, I don't, I don't know.
Well, I can, I'll defer, I'll try to answer it, and if Derek wants to jump in, the code speaks to porches, it speaks to walkways, it speaks to entrances. It separates that out. And it says dwelling entrance.
Does entrance, is it synonymous with door or is it an area? That's what I wonder, I almost, I'm picking up, actually, I, I think on what the, um, the architect, um, so, but it's still, it represents the entrance in a sense, the way that it, the way that it looks with the walkway and...
Well, I think what happened, part of the things with doorways and entrance ways, there were houses built that took advantage of a loophole and put the, the doors all the way on the side of the house, like those valley roadhouses next to it. But, so the entrance, and now I'll defer to Derek, the entrance is the entrance door.
I, I agree with Michael.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I call it, it's a variance, that's why it's...
That's why it's a variance.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not quite done, though. I, I feel like this, there was a lot of thought that went into this. I feel good about it, I don't know whether, if there's a certain amount of variances that we, uh, if, if, I feel like there may be prejudice at times against there being a lot of variances. But, um, I feel that, especially with the fence, I think that hopefully would address the, the concerns with, which I hadn't, wouldn't have, hadn't thought about, um, of the, um, next-door neighbor. I think that's good, and I, when I looked at it earlier today, I didn't kind of understand what the squares that had, that were representing the parking spot, not what size of the car would be. So, that relieves my concern about that, although it, you know, I think, I don't think anyone, including the people who designed it, would say that this is, um, spacious. But I think that's almost the nature of what it's like to live in that part of the, of town. So, I'm, I, I'm, if we have a motion to approve, I'm gonna vote in favor of it.
What you're feeling about the fence or no fence?
Well, no, I said, I, I, fence sounds like it would, um, address, could, especially, I think a fence rather than, um, a hedge, because I, I immediately thought, well, it would have to be a very strong hedge, um, not to be knocked over by a door that would be open. So, I think a fence is, is much more appropriate, um, for...
Thank you. Comments, any more comments, someone would like to make one, yes, please, Bernie?
Uh, yeah, so I, I, I agree that the, uh, the fence at an appropriate height and length will address the, um, the parking, uh, control. Um, as far as an entrance goes, I, 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 I do think that there's some, um, difference between an entry that is totally, um, like those sideways houses, that you have to clearly walk all the way around to go in the side of a house and it's clearly, you know, turned to, to not orient to the street. This, uh, clearly has an entry, um, sequence that is addressing the street, even if the door is ninety degrees. Um, I, I think it's presenting as a house with its face to the street.
Yeah.
Uh, so I don't, um, I, I don't have that issue with it, although I, I can understand, um, a different interpretation. It does improve the interior layout of the house.
I have a question, actually, of Derek. Derek, how does the, the front-facing door, and I believe it is a door, that is the entrance, how does that relate to the ADU?
Derek, you're muted.
The ADU can't have a door that face, two doors can't face the street, so the ADU would have to have a side-entry door.
Got it, thank you.
I have a comment, or, I have a, I'd like to say something. And, uh, Brian kind of, or Mr. Kennedy kind of triggered this in saying that this is, we're gonna be facing a lot of these in the future. And I'm concerned that just because an ADU fits on somebody's backyard, if it doesn't work with a lot properly, and in this case, I don't think it does, because I think parking will always be a problem there, but I, I'm just wondering, I mean, by right, if you have a, if you have a property that an ADU fits on the backyard, does that, does that mean we have to kind of, uh, go along with it if we, yeah, to support those kinds of ideas? I don't think it works, I don't think the parking will ever work. I think the question about what kind of cars, I mean, you can't regulate where people are gonna park and how many cars they're gonna own or what size of cars are gonna be. And so, I think, even though the, the ADU works in the backyard, it doesn't work for that property. And I think we're gonna be facing that on, uh, you know, a lot of, a lot of these cases going down in the future, and I'm not gonna vote for positive, but I don't think it worked. I don't, I don't think the, I think the fence is a, is kind of a makeshift kind of solution to a problem. I didn't, I just, I just don't think that parking works.
Well, Derek, I mean, the ADUs do have to meet certain bulk standards as well, correct?
Correct, the, the ADUs can be placed on, you know, substandard lots that don't meet lot area or lot width or lot depth, but they do need to meet the setbacks and their specific requirements for ADUs. The ADUs only require parking if they have three habitable rooms. So, if, if a habitable room was dropped, uh, there's no parking requirement, uh, so. I mean, you have to view them on a case-by-case basis and examine the facts in every case. We're gonna, they're pretty popular and, you know, sometimes people need variances, so we'll just have to look at the positives and the negatives and, and make a decision as we go forward.
The ADU ordinance is here to stay and, and, uh, they change the whole nature of single-family areas.
But they have to sit on a lot, they have to work. I mean, it's not just a matter, it's not a right by nature that you can pop a...
You, we can get into the whole validity of ADUs and what they're trying to, what they're trying to do, but...
I'm not against, I'm not against the idea of the ADU, I mean...
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
It has to work on a lot, it has to work on the property. And this one doesn't work, you know, as configured, it doesn't work, because that parking will never be resolved with a, a temporary fence. That is not a resolution to what kind of cars are parked in that driveway.
We can't regulate that, the neighbor's, the neighbor's concern is valid, though.
Right, I agree, and I, that's why I think it doesn't work.
What, what do you mean by temporary fence?
Oh, any kind of fence, I mean, that's... I mean, I don't think the, the fence doesn't solve the size of those parking spaces. And I don't think you can regulate the size of the car or the, or even, you know, statistically prove that two people aren't gonna have SUVs and a F-150 parking there. And, and for those reasons, I just, I, you know, I just don't think it works. I just don't think that parking works, has nothing to do with the fence.
Okay.
I, I have one question for, or, or a request that is part of your discussion. Uh, this be, uh, consider, um, the applicants argued that the parking variances... The applicants argued that the parking variances should be considered. C-one variances. Because they've argued they have undersized lot width and lot area. I don't know if they're making the same argument with respect to the front door orientation. So. If, uh. Whoever makes the motion, whatever it is, if it's a motion to grant all requested relief, I would just ask. Since I'm preparing your resolution. What is your thought about that variance? Meaning, do you think that that's? A C-one type of hardship? Or is there some other reason now?
I personally don't.
Two that, that, that's, you know, that's what justifies the variance.
I personally don't think it's a C-one type of variance.
Well, then perhaps, I don't know if you want to have Mr. Kennedy. Trying to explain to you what the basis would be as a C-two variant. Yeah, the board could. You know.
Right.
Pick a purpose of zoning that they think is met, but. Perhaps it would be best for Mr. Kennedy to, um, or, or Mr. Jacques Marque, because I believe he is a planner. Uh, he holds a planning license, but somebody to explain to the board. What they believe, um. What category they believe the front door orientation would fall within.
Certainly. And, and as, um, I, I think in, in one of the many summaries I attempted, I, I did, you know, there wasn't a lot of discussion about the front door, but I, I did, uh. Uh, I think intended to suggest that C-two was, was more, uh, appropriate. It's one where, um. Uh, we. Had testimony about the, the, both the positives and negatives, but, but ultimately, we feel it's better planning to allow these, um. This particular change with an existing building at this location, the applicant could tear it down and build something totally compliant. Their choice and the benefit of, um, of, of reorienting the existing space for, uh, um, the environmental benefits, um, and to adapt it for. Uh, this new use without destroying it or, or building something totally new. Um, does then, um, bring in the, the orientation that Mr. Floyd said of the interior space. Um, I. I, I, I understand what he was saying and I don't fully disagree with him frankly. Um, normally we're not looking at what someone's using, uh, from, uh, from a use perspective, but you heard about. By reusing that existing space there with that configuration of the front porch and the, what was likely a. Enclosed rest of the front porch off to the right, um, by. Diverting the, the pedestrian tra, entry traffic towards the, the interior steps, you create, um, um, a kind of a. A space there and a bit of a vestibule rather than just kind of opening up directly, uh, in, into the main space. So I, I had suggested and I. While we are undersized and there is a, maybe some type of mini hardship of the existing building. That close to the front of the street and not having really room to do something else. Ultimately though, uh, C, C-two, the more flexible. Um, variance is the one that we, we feel is, is. From this one.
Mr. Kennedy, with, you know, within C-two, are there any particular purposes of zoning that you feel are being advanced here? And I ask that. Uh, being mindful of the fact that, as you've pointed out, there will be future, um, EDU applications. So. I think that, um. It would be helpful to the board just to understand what purposes do you think are being promoted? Because I understand you're saying generally better planning, but.
Sure, the, the more, uh, efficient, uh, with apologies, I, I don't have the ordinance in front of it.
Okay, got you, got you. Well, we've got, uh, safety through fire, man-made disasters. Adequate light air and open space. Uh, we've got some more, you know, population densities, um. And sufficient space for variety of uses, transportation, which desirable visual environment. Preservation of historic sites. Energy resources, planned unit development, senior housing. Renewable energy, recyclable materials. Various planning tools, clustering, development rights, let's say, averaging and something about military facilities. So.
We, we do, we, we do have a planner on here, but I'll, I'll, I'll keep vamping, uh, on, on his, uh, behalf, but ultimately, um. Uh, the reuse of this building that, that is a, a, rather than rebuilding something fully compliant and tearing down what is there. Um, is, is the environmental recycling benefits of, of that item, uh, the, the air. Light and, and open space and adequate spaces for, for uses element is, is promoted ultimately. By still having that front porch, but allowing people to, um, enter the home without going directly into the. Living room right up, um, up the gut essentially. The, the, those two predominantly.
Okay. Thank you.
Michael.
Yeah, sticking with the C-two and. You know, I understand the. The various purposes, you know. Of the land use that can be cited, but. The introductory paragraph to me is more important and more to the point. The applicant must establish. That the application one. Relates to a specific piece of property. That question regarding the door. Does this specific piece of property? Really need a side entrance door in the front? Um, number two. The purposes of zoning and the MLUL. Would be advanced. By a deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements now. Is. Is, is the. Purposes of zoning advanced? By the door moving? To a non-compliant position. Three. That the variance can be granted. Without substantial detriment. To the public good. The public good, and I learned this from a planning board meeting last. Is the general neighborhood. It's not the people that live in the house. And that was explained by Jerry Muller. Uh, the attorney to the planning board. That the benefits of the deviation. Would substantially outweigh any detriment. Five. That the variance will not substantially. Impair the intent and purposes of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Essentially, the focus of granting a C-two variance should be. Whether the variance reflects a better zoning alternative. For the property. Which will benefit the community. That's the basis or. The way to do. Or I think to do the analysis.
Well, I would certainly agree with you and, 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 uh, I think Mr. Bridger would too, because I think that's how he phrases it when he goes through the C-two variances.
Yeah.
I, I'd say, uh, again, the, um. Purpose A, uh, the appropriate use and development of lands in a manner that will promote the public health, safety, morals and general welfare is advanced. Uh, by the ability to reuse this. Front structure, um, um, as a, a. More usable, modern entrance without rebuilding it. Um. Again, to provide adequate light air and open space. Again, that is the preservation of the existing. Porch structure, um, the use as a porch and as a, an entrance, but also to have a door that allows the. Family living in this unit to, um, have some privacy by having it not directly open into the, where. On a narrow lot has to be the only living space, um. That's. A and C. And, um. To promote a desirable visual element through creative development techniques and good civic design. Again, by keeping that open porch there rather than perhaps enclosing it, which we, they. They could do in putting the door there and enclosing that vestibule, vestibule to create that barrier and privacy. This design allows the entrance and privacy to. Happen this way while still maintaining the open front porch that, um, uh, the master plan over and over, over again. Looks to incentivize and keep, uh, from a street cape, state perspective. Um, and then there was, there was kind of extensive testimony both on the, the visual look, which is almost imperceptibly different. In terms of a signal that this is where one enters the home, um, and the open front porch area that is used as a gathering space. Uh, for mail, for neighbors, for discussions, uh, that is the, the, the ultimately. We believe the, the point of those, um, requirements, um, and if you were to. Balance the, the negatives, which we believe there are none in this case, that, that there's no, no harm to the zone plan. Uh, at all with this arrangement, um, and, uh, with, with those positives that, that we. We come to the conclusion that we have. And I'll also, again, just point out, um. There is an and in that section. So that's the, that's the clause and, and part of neighborhood character that does two things, one of which, well, again. We might disagree, but we didn't challenge this as an interpretation, um, doesn't include the word door. It talks about entrance. And I think there could be some. Um, if not disagreement on what that means, at least understanding that the intent is a place where one that signals. Entering a home and, and accessing it in a street friendly neighbor that, uh, neighbor or way that relates to the street that comes to the, um. Um, uh, friendly inviting entrance that Princeton in its master plan and zoning are looking for. Most of the variances that you see in this regard are not about this door orientation. Uh, I mean, there certainly are some. Um, but, and I, I hate to cite specific examples, but often this is the, the clause that looks at how the house addresses the street. Right? Where a house is turned to not address the street or doesn't have a front porch or that front entrance. Um, so there are, i- i- in that, there are probably several. I'll say components or maybe strikes in this neighborhood character element. One is the whole orientation of the house. The next is this entrance area isn't there. And then probably the last one, which is the only one that doesn't. Have the word in the ordinance, which is door, which is, which way does the door go? Um, uh, so here, the house. Addresses the street. The entranceway and porch addresses the street. And in a way that from the photos we showed, you couldn't perceive any difference of. The door, we believe still addresses the street, but doesn't face. The front, uh, uh, the, the, the front door for the reasons that we think the positive reasons. That we described. And I, I don't want to end by quoting, you know, meatloaf, but you know, two out of three of those reasons are, 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 ain't bad. And, and. When you're looking at, you know, the, the reasons for the ordinance, um. And, and the types of variances that you might also be looking at, which is turn the whole house or have a porch that's, you know, midway up for a driveway, a car centric idea. That's not what this is. All of the things that we see as reasons for this. Provision. We hit. And, and again, while we, we kind of disagree from a technical perspective, we, we didn't, we didn't push that here because we think this is. Better planning and makes more sense. Um, um, but, but ultimately, if you look at those steps of what that's trying to do, we get almost all of them. Um, in a way that we don't see any and that we didn't hear any negative, um, other than just in general, obviously you want to have fewer variances than, than, than not. But beyond that, uh, we, we, we can't discern any negative. From, from having this orientation.
Wow. A very interesting explanation.
I, I did wonder if door and entrance really were, I did, were exactly equal. And I, I. I'm not persuaded that they are. I, I think that what you said about the sidewalk. And the whole orientation of. I mean, if you can show me where I, I. I think there was a, there's been a lot of. Effort gone into making this. Work and it doesn't work in the way that. It would if it had an acre. But I think given what they're working with. It's, um, it, I, I give them, I give them a lot of credit for trying to create something that. I think has a lot of positives. I really do.
Michael.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, people are entitled to their opinion. I, I, I do recall earlier. Derek said. It's about the door. It's not about all those other things. As far as the orientation of the house, the, well, we got a porch there. So. Like I say, you're entitled to, to your opinion, but don't forget. Which is only officer told you. What it's about.
The interesting thing is from, and I agree with you, Michael. When you approach, depending on how you, which direction you approach the house from, you can actually see the front door. You can identify the entrance to the house. The other way you just see steps going to a porch. Doesn't have to be the front door and the intent, I believe. Is to have that visual identity of the door, which is, in my opinion, the entry to the house. Visible from the street. In all directions.
And, and faces the street.
Well.
You also gotta, you gotta read the code if you.
No, no, no. What I, what I'm saying is yes, it faces the street because the side approach does not face the street. And is not identifiable from different directions when you approach the house. Hey, hey, a quick question.
Anybody can vote, you know, any way they want to. I'm, I'm just.
Well, I, I have a question. Could you?
We shouldn't read.
Hang on one second, George. Okay, my question is. George, hang on one sec. Michael, will you repeat the last of that? I didn't hear it.
I said, the whole orientation also includes. If it's. Face basically facing front. What's front? It's relationship to the, to the, to the street.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, so. Facing sideways. Is not. That relationship to the street.
Yeah, it's not facing the street. Okay, George?
Yeah, my question is if you keep the front door and add a side door on the porch, would that? Create any issues? Would that even require a variance?
You mean have two doors on the porch?
No, one door. Watch and. Um, where it is now. You keep the door you have and you add a door.
Two doors?
Yes.
I, I guess to that, that would be, that would be mighty weird.
That's what I, I guess kind of the, the question I had. I know it's kind of an odd question, but what if, yeah, i- is it, you have to actually end it. If you did that orientation, a door on either side. And the door that's facing the street, that was inoperable, but the door in. Was the one to the right that I want to put in. And on the backside of the wall. It actually looks like a wall from inside the house. I'm, I'm not saying it's the right approach. It is still weird, but. How does that play in the zone plan? I mean, if you're, it, does it actually have to go through that door? Or what if there are two doors and you pick, you could pick and choose? How would that play with the ordinance?
Just getting, this is.
Again, way into.
I know it's silly, but I mean.
Look. I'm reading the Dix dictionary definition from Oxford. Door. An entrance. An entrance is a door or a gate that leads you to someplace. So. Evaluate the negative and positive criteria. We have two more cases, sorry, but, uh.
Yeah, we, we really gotta.
I wasn't trying to start a hole in the conversation, but it's just.
It's very clear, it's very clear to me that the entrance is a door. And, and quite frankly. The, the fact that it opens into a big room. Is just a, a function of what the developer chose to do, take down all the interior walls and make it a big open space. And we don't consider what's inside. All right. Well, unless there are any other comments, does somebody want to make a motion?
Steve, I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, Mr. Perone has his hand up, uh, I don't know. That's your.
Sure, please. Be brief, please.
Buddy, could you bring him over, please?
I'm trying.
Thank you.
But we're not in public session right now. We're in.
No, we're not.
Let's, let's, I would think we can let him speak. I mean, he's, he's the most affected immediate neighbor.
Hi, sorry about that, folks. I, I just wanted to make mention, I forgot to, to indicate it earlier, that up until about, I think eight years ago, there was a. Uh, a hedge that divided the properties, ran right down that, um, center island. So there has, has historically been separation between the two properties to prevent doors and people from spilling onto each other. Uh, until. Uh, until the hedge died and, and Mrs. Federico and my mother uh, were well into their nineties and didn't want to fuss around with the hedge anymore. So it was taken down, but.
But, but the hedge was on your property, obviously.
Well, you know, it's interesting and I, and I don't, you know, I, I, I'll take it for what it, I'll take it for face value, what we heard tonight. Um, you know, I, I don't know because the, uh, the hedge was up. Um, there was a dirt island that the hedge was built on. And then the Belgian blocks, I think the hedge came down and the Belgian blocks went in. So I have no idea how things may have shifted. Uh, but, um, I just wanted to throw that anecdotally that, you know, there was always up until recently, separation between the two properties to prevent, you know, the situation I'm concerned with.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sorry. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, that's interesting though. Um, okay, we're back to motion. Anyone?
Well, I would make a motion to approve it. Um, and to withdraw the option of, I don't know what the right language would be, the option of having the door moved.
What, what, what do you mean? Withdraw? You mean you want the side entrance or a door facing the street?
I, I know what I want, but I'm, I don't know what, I'm hopeful that if that part was taken out, that people might be favorable. If leaving.
Okay, but, but right now the.
Having a door that faces towards the street.
Okay, that's what you, so changing what was presented tonight and changing it to a front, to a door.
It's just, it's just denying.
Right.
The variance for the door and approving the variance for the driveway setback, conditioned to on whatever conditions. Or the other alternative is to do a motion, but she's not proposing that, that both of them get approved. But I, and I think some people will go one way, some people go the other. So. It sounds like.
Even what, Eve, what would you like your motion to be?
I would like, I would like my motion to be approving actually what was proposed.
All right. So your motion is to approve the entire application. Are there any conditions to your motion? There was discussion about the fence. There was also discussion about, um, some kind of lease restrictions, limiting, how many cars to one car for the ADU.
That, I, that I think we would, we would want is the lease restriction.
All right. So you are the lease restriction, one car. And what about the fence?
The fence, I guess there's controversy about exactly how, I, it sounds like the fence should, could not or should not be in the front yard setback, that maybe it would end at that.
Well, I think we had discussion about the fence running the entire, uh, I guess entire length of.
I'm actually not quite sure where things landed with that.
Yeah. So that's, I'm not, not quite sure either, but I think the neighbor wanted it to run the entire length of the common property line. So. Someone can correct me if they have a different understanding of it, but I'm just trying to get Eve's motion down. And then we can see if we have a second. So that's my understanding of what the neighbor want. Doesn't the board have to approve it, but?
I agree, Karen. Eve, do you?
Yes, I think that sounds, I think that sounds right.
All right. Is there a second for this motion now?
Well, okay.
I'd second that motion.
Okay.
Now we can discuss the motion?
Well, right, uh, uh, yes. I mean, right now we're, you know, we're in a mode where someone's made a motion in a second. So we can discuss it unless somebody wants to call a question and says, I don't want to talk about it anymore. But, um, yeah, you can, you can not discuss it.
I, I have a question about the, when you said the fence running the entire length of the property line.
Right.
You, I, I, I don't know what height we're talking about now. Is that like six feet? I, I think you have to stop it.
It'd be six.
A good amount short of the property line in order to have the sight lines and, uh, so I, I don't know exactly what that distance needs to be, but it depends on the height of fence.
Eric?
It depend on the kind of fence as well. I mean, there could be a, you know, like kind of a, uh, you know, more transparent. I mean, I, it would, if it were.
You could, fence could be six feet high at the back of the property, but it really shouldn't be more than three or four feet high at the last 20 feet of the driveway, because there's two parallel driveways. There's sight triangle issues and you can't see what's coming. So.
So probably would, should be no, no more than three feet at that point.
Yes, sir. For like the last 20.
For the last 20 feet, the first 20 feet.
Yes, correct.
Yeah. Eve, does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
I would, I would suggest, but, um, that it might be to the property line or such lesser length as the neighbor, so they don't have to come back at the neighbor things. Yeah, I really don't want it to go to the sidewalk. You know, leave some leeway in that condition.
Sounds, okay.
Yeah, but who's, uh, but then who's making the decision? Michael, you're saying that the neighbor will get to.
It would, it would be with the agreement of the, uh, uh, Mr. Perone.
It depends, it depends on his agreement. He'd have to agree to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only reason we're saying to the property line is he, he initially said that. I'm hoping he kind of reconsider's and it's shorter, but I'm okay with it going to the property line. That, that was just suggested.
And if I can ask, what, what's the justification going to be for granting the variance to the front entry door?
Well, the, the, yeah, I don't, I don't know. The unfortunate thing, um, I support the, the one variance and I'm voting no on the, on the door. So.
You know, initially, initially, as I said, as, as looking at that, how that whole entry functions, um, I, I initially supported the side entrance. But again, discussing in context of the ordinance, it's very clear that the ordinance wants the door to face the street. And so in order for that to change, there's got to be some compelling reason to have it change. So.
I am worried about pushing for that right now because I don't want it to shoot the whole thing down, actually. So I'm a little bit.
I know, but we've got a motion and a second on that now. So.
Okay, we reverse. If we're looking at the way it looks out with a board, should we, is there a possibility we can, I can revoke my second so that we can maybe change it so they can pass this and we can move on?
Well, I, I think at this point, perhaps we might as well just take a vote on this. If this doesn't pass, then someone can now propose a new motion. So.
Okay.
I think that makes the most sense.
We can't, we can't wait, Helen, excuse me, we can't amend this right now since it's in second it already?
If we're following Robert's rules of order, yeah, we've got a motion and a second and it's on the floor now. So.
But you, can't you withdraw the motion?
Are you withdrawing your motion, Eve?
And then you, you put a new motion on.
Well, are you withdrawing it, Eve? I'm not clear.
I, I, okay, I'm going to withdraw the motion.
Okay. Just if, if I can make a, a point of order, if, if that motion were to be brought forward and fail, a second motion, perhaps approving a different subset of variance could, could be done.
Correct.
Correct?
Well, that's what I had proposed, but.
I just want to make sure I, it didn't sound like that, what you had suggested.
No, that's, that's what I believe Karen did suggest, but this might be easier.
Yeah.
Okay. So Eve, do you want to withdraw the motion?
Um, yes.
All right. Do you want to make another motion or does someone want to make another motion?
I, I'd like Mr. Davich to take over now.
I, I guess we'll, I mean, I guess we'll go with, I think with the second motion, well, the driveway, as we've stipulated with either with a fence, should be determined the length by the, uh, agreement between the, the neighbor and the applicant. Um, and then, um, uh, not accepting the, uh, before the, the side facing door. So that's not.
Okay, just one, just one question about the, the driveway. It's subject to agreement with the neighbor, but the concerns that Derek's raised, such as it shouldn't be more than three feet for the first 20 feet. Suppose the neighbor doesn't want that. Suppose the neighbor says, no, I would like it to be six feet the entire length. I, I, I think that there, either the zoning officer has to have some say in this, or we need to put some standards so that there isn't a concern now about blocking site distances because that's, no. The neighbor feels that that would be best. That's the best protection for them, but it may not be the best protection for.
If, if, if we're looking for a condition that the applicant would, would easily stipulate to is that we would be happy to have the whole length in, in working with, um, the zoning officer and the staff to find the appropriate place, um, for it to, to end. And then that could include input from the property owner, but I, I, we share Ms. Casey's concern that, uh, we don't want to be in a situation where we'd ever get anything approved in an unsolvable condition.
I, I agree. That seems to make sense.
So height and length confirmed with the zoning officer. Right. Okay. Cause it could also be a hedge. Maybe they want to go with a hedge option. Who knows?
They don't have enough land for a hedge. They have zero two feet.
I thought there was one there before. Okay.
There's, there is on the neighbor's property, but not on the applicant's property.
Right. Okay. Well, I forget.
I'd like to reiterate that I still don't think the parking works.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So.
Second?
No, go ahead, Eve, please.
Does this need a second?
Yes.
Well, let's, I just want to make, let's, let's, Karen, so this motion is to basically approve the parking, the side entry to the, uh, the entrance into the ADU, but not the front door location as it's currently shown, but it has to face the street.
Right.
And then the fence situation that we discussed.
Yes.
Correct. But they're not. I mean, the only variances that are being sought are for the parking stall size, the parking setback, and the variance for the existing front door to change its orientation. That's what the applicant is seeking. That's what the zoning officer says is required. The motion is to approve the parking stall size and parking setback variances and to deny the variance to change the orientation of the front door. And it has a condition that the applicant will work with the zoning officer to, uh, determine the appropriate length and size of the fencing between the two neighboring properties. And I don't know, does this motion also include a condition in the lease restricting, or, or requiring only one car for each unit?
Well, I think that's something that, that they, the applicant had talked about. So I think we should incorporate it into the ordinance.
All right. So Jim, you're comfortable with that, with you in your motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
So are we ready? Now we're ready for a second?
Now we're ready for a second. Unless there's some disguise, is there any other discussion of the motion? Michael, did you indicate you wanted to speak?
No, I just got a second. It, let's.
Okay. All right. So let's go for a second at this point. Michael, are you seconding the order? Okay. So we have a motion. We have a motion. We have a second. Does anybody want to hear the motion again or are we ready to vote? Okay, Claudia, call a roll.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
No.
Mr. Tenemog?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
It is approved. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all for the spirited discussion. Um, much appreciated, uh, the time tonight. Thanks so much.
Thank you all. Okay. We want to take a moment here, take five. It's 10 o'clock. Let's take five minutes. Well, well, it's nine 59. At 10:05, we're going to come back. Okay?
As long as we're sitting here, can we chat? I have a question for Michael Floyd.
Um, actually, George, I think we are still recording now, so I don't. Yeah, we are recording. I just see the recording light, so I don't think chatting would be good right now.
All right. Do that offline, Michael.
Got me, got me wondering how inflammatory a question you would ask.
Oh, inflammatory, definitely. Oh, inflammatory, definitely.
Yeah. But I'll, I'll, I'll chat a little bit as, as these assistant dwelling units are a learning process. The planning board has a hearing on April eleventh, one even more complicated. You might want to tune in or watch the tape after the eleventh.
Right.
It's, it's amazing.
This, this is the cottage court?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's.
This is a cottage court. I don't know what that is.
To a new street, it's a subdivision, but then subdivide the property and it's almost compliant lot size, but a little bit, little bit under. But turning both subdivided properties into a main house in the ADU and putting the ADU in front of the main house.
Well, that's the, that's the, yeah, yeah, that one. Was that heard by the planning board yet, Michael?
They did a concept and then they had, they didn't start the hearing last week. They chose not because they felt the document was missing or possibly missing. They didn't have to consider. But yeah. I think everybody's learning how more complicated it is. You know?
Why is that? Why is it planning board and not us?
And it requires a site plan. Anything over three units requires a site plan, so we can hear up to like duplexes and that type of stuff. Site plans with the use variance for FAR or a use that's not permitted.
Yeah.
Steve, a question, since it's already ten, we have two more applications to go. And I is the board going to go till eleven tonight? Because if not, then maybe you want to take jurisdiction of the last one and, and.
I would think. It's ten oh five now. I don't think, I, I what, what's the, the board's favorite? Do you want to go to eleven tonight? We won't start any new applications after ten thirty. So most probably that third application, you're right, we can take jurisdiction of it. But we can let the applicant know that we're going to probably defer that to the next hearing.
Well, then maybe we should. I don't know if they're here. Somebody must be here for it tonight. I believe they are. So once we and we're taping now, so if we're going back in order now, then.
One of the applicants for the last case has his hand up.
Okay, so let's see.
Stop, stop. Yes, yes, I'm here. The, the third.
Did you have a question, Mr. Dees, or?
I, I did not. I just wasn't.
Oh, okay. Oh, no problem. No problem then. Okay.
I wasn't sure if I was being called, called to appear. To comment on this. If you want to defer it to, to April, you know, so be it.
Okay, alright.
Alright. Okay, so the, if there's anybody in the, in the order, in the audience who's here for the third application, that will be carried till.
Well, let's, I, I think what we need to do in order to carry it though, the board needs to take jurisdiction tonight. The noticing is in order for the application. And if the board wants to take jurisdiction, then we need to announce tonight a date certain for the hearing. That way the applicant will not have to be noticed. So we're going to have to announce tonight. To what meeting is it being carried?
Derek, do we have, what's our April agenda look like?
Well, we have Valley Road coming back. We have, I think, one or two other cases. This, this case will go before the other cases. So.
Good.
Will this case come before Valley Road or?
Valley Road will go first. This case will go next, and then the, the case that's scheduled, it's a lot area case would be the last case at this point. But that's it.
Well, what is, okay, so what is the, the date of the next meeting, Derek?
April twenty-four.
April twenty-four. Alright, so for the benefit of the applicant and anybody else who is listening tonight, four oh three Mount Lucas will be carried to April twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. The applicant is not required to be noticed, so they will not be sending out any additional notices to anyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next case is case number Z twenty-four dash four fifty-eight, six sixty Prettybrook Road, block forty-nine oh one, lot two. In the R one, that R one T zone?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Very good. Derek, can you summarize your memo, please?
Yes, sir. Dr. Song and Julie Song are the owner and applicants of six sixty Prettybrook Road. They're seeking a C two variance request for the expansion of existing motor court garage to permit construction of a one bay addition to the two car attached garage and a second floor addition is also proposed above the existing garage. The additions are an exception to the required motor court setbacks in the side facing facade length and the height to setback ratio. Property is located in the R one T zone in the former township. The subject lots complying with the applicable bulk regulations. The house is not complying with the required one to one point five height to setback ratio of the existing is one to one point two five. The applicant wants to add a bay to the existing two car garage that would protrude from the front of the garage and add a storage area on that first level. And then in the second level, they're proposing a forty-one by twenty-four foot second floor addition. This addition features a game room and a full bath. The proposal requires the, the following variances. The height to setback, the one point five to one, the proposed is one to one. The side setback facade, the max length of a side facing facade is forty feet. That's a neighborhood character requirement. The proposed is forty-one feet, two inches and motor court heights have a restriction of twenty-five feet in height. The proposed is twenty-six feet four. And they also have a, a requirement that there, there not be habitable space on the second floor. So that's the synopsis of the case. They're seeking a C two variance, and if you have any questions, be glad to address them.
I'm not familiar with the motor court ordinance.
It's, it's all about the garage setbacks. It's from the neighborhood character. So I don't know if, if we could bring up Mr. Song's survey.
I have it. I can bring it up.
Mr. Song, we're going to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as you know, Steve, like a side entry garage has to be set back eight feet from the nearest facade, the front facade. And a front entry garage has to be set back sixteen feet. But on larger lots, they did provide a an option for a garage to protrude from the front of the house, creating somewhat like a driveway court in front of the house. So if he pulls up the survey, we can show you what he's talking about. It's an existing condition. He already has what would be similarly called a, a motor court. But he wants to add one bay, so we would have three bays instead of two and a small storage area on the first floor. And then above it now, where I believe there's, is there a living area above their doctor song now or?
There, there is not. There is a high, high move, high ceiling.
High ceiling. So they wants to add a second floor above it.
Can you see the survey? I have it up on my screen.
It's not up on, it's not up on ours yet.
No, it's not showing.
Let's see.
Just share your screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yep.
Great.
And then I'll, I'll put up bigger too. There you go.
Okay.
So you see how that, the driveway comes in there and, and the, the house is somewhat oddly shaped. I'm, I'm just trying to categorize it. It, it reads like a motor court. And he wants to do that little addition there and add a second floor above it.
And then I can show you, it would look like that. So these two are here. This is a side entrance and we just add one here. Right now it cuts off right there.
And this is, this is a heavily wooded lot.
Yes. So, yeah, sorry. Thank you so much. Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't have much of one. You probably would be happy because it's so late. I don't know. You guys meet so late. Appreciate that. I appreciate all your time to the board. I really do. So, you know, we moved into this house in, in twenty twenty October and then since we've been living there, unfortunately, there is a car thefts in our area. We have three cars. We have two garages. So our car was attempted to broken it. There was a break in attempt on our car. Luckily it was locked. Our neighbor actually that same night got their car stolen. It was involved in a murder in Irvington. So, you know, that got me thinking of, well, we have three cars. I wish I had another garage because they didn't try to get into the garage. We filed a police report and that's on file. So that's kind of the impetus for this. And then, you know, we have three young kids. So, you know, if we had a third car, then we could, if we could have more space above that for them to get out their energy. For all you have young kids, that would be, that was our, our goal in all this. I mean, in terms of land to build, land to building ratio, we're on two point four six acres. So I don't think that's an issue. And in terms of per, imperious surface coverage, it's going to be placed on what's already driveway, so that wouldn't change there. So that, that's kind of the request we have. My architect couldn't be on the Zoom meeting, but he's on call. He's been listening since seven thirty, so I guess if you have any questions, he can hear you and he'll text me any answers to that. Technically, I don't know a lot about this. Obviously, it's not my field of expertise.
Wait a minute, Mr. Song, you said your architect's on another call?
No, he's, he's on this call. He's been listening since me, since I.
Yeah, well, then why don't we bring him over and he can testify then?
He, he's on, on a phone. I'm not sure. He can't because he's unable to do it on, on the computer.
Okay. Well.
Do we have any questions for him?
I guess that's one way to look at it.
The, 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 the issue, the issues are the variant, it's a height to setback variance, right? And that's for the new addition to the garage as well as the existing house or what? Please go through that one again.
Excuse me, excuse me. Yeah, thank you. The existing garage is not complying with the height to setback. And the second floor increases it slightly. If you look on the survey, you could see the house is kind of not squarely put on the lot. It's, it's kind of at a triangle or, you know, a diagonal shape. So that close part where the addition is, doesn't meet the height to setback. And this increase in height in the addition increases that degree of non-compliance.
Okay. Okay. And then the other issue is obviously the added space, habitable space over in the second floor over the garage now.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Mr. Song, would you like to say anything else?
No, I mean, that's, I'm just going to keep it short. That's, that's basically what we have.
Okay. Board members, do you have any questions of Mr. Song? Or of Mr. Bridger?
I have a question for Mr. Bridger.
Yes, please.
The motor court. If I'm understanding correctly and reading correctly, you can actually have a three car garage. And if I'm reading correctly, you just can only have no more than two bays. So if, and it's, it's in your, in your memo, could they instead of asking for the variance, just make a large bay entranceway, you know, combined with their addition? Because three, three cars are permitted according to Derek's memo.
So, Michael, are you saying put a double door instead of a single door?
Yeah, and I, I guess that's what the the code left that option open because it says you can only have two bays, but you can have three cars.
Yeah.
Three car garage.
Yeah, that's.
I don't know. That's a question.
Yeah, I guess in my mind, if you take a drive down Prettybrook, Stonybrook, Pheasant Hill, anything around us, the majority of my neighbors have three car garages and a lot of them have space above them that there's obviously living in. So, I mean, that's the only reason that we thought about all this. And then when we proposed it, it bounced back. So that's kind of.
That's I guess, Michael, what you're, you're saying is, in a sense, it's a little bit of an inconsistency in the, in the ordinance.
But, but unfortunately, I, I got to assume it was a purposeful inconsistency.
To force a double door rather than a single door?
Yeah, I mean, somebody writing it, it's, it's not the most complex thing to digest. If you're saying you can have three cars, but only two entrances. I don't think that went over somebody's head.
Hold on, can I just, I got the ordinance up or the section of the code now? And it says motor garages on large lots. Yep. Applicability, the following provisions shall apply to lots one hundred and twenty-five feet or greater in width, except corner lots. A motor court garage may be located in front of the foremost portion of the dwelling. The garage shall be oriented oriented toward the interior of the lot and not the street or the side of the property. The garage shall be limited to parking for three vehicles. The parking shall be no higher, or excuse me, the garage shall be no higher than one story and a maximum of twenty-five feet or a maximum of twenty-five feet is measured to the peak of the roof or the height of the principal structure, whichever is last. The garage shall not contain habitable space above and the bottom of the roof shall not be greater than twelve feet above the average finished grade as measured along the foremost portion of the garage. But if you look at the detail of the garage court, which you might not have, it does show a three bay garage with three doors. So, I mean, I struggle with this neighborhood character ordinance. It's not a problem when you have, you know, a new house. But, you know, we, we have seen these cases with, you know, people adding on to an existing garage or, so it, it's, it's it's kind of a quandary, you know, and it's something the board needs to, to think about, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Michael, what do you, what is that? What do you think about that?
I don't know. It's a quandary. But, you know, I, I'm not just speaking for myself. I don't know what other people think.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, any comments from any other board members?
I would say for neighborhood character, I think three doors of the same size looks a lot better than one door, small and a large, large double door. I think the, from a general architectural standpoint, I think three looks better than one small and one big.
Well, the way architecturally it's been presented with three dormers, three doors is more consistent. But again, then we get into the discussion of the habitable space on the second floor.
Oh, right, yeah. Well, what if it's seven, that is habitable space of certain ceiling height, right? If it's shorter than what, less than eight feet, then it's not considered habitable space?
No, it, it would be five feet.
Five?
Yeah.
Yeah, to the eaves. So you could basically have a, a slope ceiling and, and those, that space in the eaves would, wouldn't be considered second floor.
Okay.
But this is, this is a situation where they want to use it as a playroom, I guess. Is that correct, Mr. Song?
Yeah, that's correct for the three kids.
Yeah.
And you're, you're right, Mr. Cohen, the area is very heavily wooded. So from the road, I mean, in the winter, you can see the house, but in the, in the summer, you can't really see, you know, much of the garage. You can see the top of the house too, from Prettybrook. So which section does you want me to show? My architect wants me to show you a section. This is awkward. Which section?
Yeah, we can. I saw the section on the drawings.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah, okay. You saw it. Yeah.
Yes.
Nope, that's it. That's what, yeah, he I knew what he asked me to. Sorry, thank you.
Alright, so I guess, let's see, Mr. Song, you don't wanna, yes, please, what?
Who's saying Steve? Who is that?
Was it Michael? Did you say Steve?
Yeah, I I did. You you. I keep getting uh breaking up transition, a transmission, but um. If it's working now, um, I wanted, I wanted to see if if the applicant. Can give us any other. Justification. To have habitable space. When the code, you know, I I don't have anything to hang my hat on. To even support that when you got a code that says no habitable space.
Okay, that's fair.
Yeah, I guess, when the reason we thought of that idea is because when we walk around and drive around our neighborhood, there are plenty of three car garages with. Ru- habitable space above them, so I guess maybe, I don't know if they're grandfathered in, but that's. The reason that we thought, you know, for our kids, we wanted uh an open space for them.
Well, I mean, for instance, do you, I I I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but do you have. Existing room within the house for the kids to play, or is this?
Right, right. No, I understand what you're saying. We're not not a not a large, we don't, we don't have a large area like that. This would provide a larger area for them to play in, that's all.
Not too late, not too late to make it an ADU, Dr. Song.
That that last, those last two hours are kind of more than I could get into, I think, so. More than I have time to get into.
Right. Um. Alright, do you wanna, so that's that's in a sense your justification for the space, just a. A a a a large open room for your kids to play.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, I understand what you're asking in terms of any justification, but because we're putting the third car garage in. And then our current garage has just big open space above it. Uh, we just wanted to utilize that 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 space, basically, since we're doing the whole renovation, well, we.
What what do you, what do you use that space for currently?
Nothing. There's nothing there. I mean, it's just, it's just a high high pitched uh roof line.
So you're raising, are you raising the roof in here?
I think just by a foot and change is why.
You can see in the diagram he has here with the front elevation, I think the existing garage. Is on the left. There's a section of it.
Oh, yes, okay.
So you could see the difference. Um, and also in his, in his cover letter, the architect mentioned that. Uh, the addition will be put over existing impervious coverage, so there wouldn't be any additional impervious coverage created.
It's just, it's a reframing of the roof. And and an addition of the single car garage and a storage area. Okay. Alright. Um. Okay, a board member, Michael, do you have any other questions or do any other board members?
No, I'm fine. I don't have a question.
Okay. Any other board members have any questions of the applicant?
I'm just curious, uh, the other houses in your neighborhood that have. Habitable space above garages are, are those um motor court garages?
Uh, I I don't, I don't recall. I just know that most of the houses, the majority have three car garages. And uh, space above, but I don't, I don't know. I'd have to go. Specifically look for that.
In this particular lot, the the. I under, I I quite frankly was not aware of the whole mo- motor court situation before this, but this lot. Is a bit unique because it, the house sits all the way back on a very heavily wooded lot. And and um. So the uh. So the impact of this. On other houses. Or the area itself would be. Very, very minimal.
I agree.
Uh, well, if Mr. Song, if you don't have any other comments, we'll open it up to the public. For their comments. We'll see if anybody wants to speak about this.
Yep, no, no, I have no further. Thank you very much.
Alright, so we'll open this up to the public. Uh, if there's anyone out there who wants to speak. Please indicate it by pushing the or. Hitting the little uh raise your hand button on the bottom of the screen. Claudia, has anybody done that?
There are no hands. And Mr. Song, can you stop sharing your screen, please?
Thank you. Alright, so hearing, no one wants to speak, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Mr. Song, you have the opportunity to kind of sum up. Um. What you want to do before we go into executive session, discuss it amongst ourselves and vote.
Sure, yeah. So once again, you know, I guess for. Safety purposes, you know, theft purposes, I want to add a third car garage to the position two car garage. Um, I want to put a a room above that. Uh, I guess reframe the roof in a sense. And then, uh, you know, we're on two point four six acres, so I don't think. It was an issue with the land to building ratio or the impervious coverage and our, like I explained, we're setback, as you saw in the diagram, and it's it's wooded. And you can't see just the top of the house actually during this seasons when there are leaves on the trees, so. You know, that that's just our our request. Thank you for your time and for the late hour staying.
You're welcome. Okay, board members. Discussion, motion?
Well, I'm I'm sure there's a reason why the. Says you can't have something above the garage, but it doesn't seem to make much sense to have an open. Room. I think I'd be more concerned if you. Were trying to put in an apartment of some type or some kind of living arrangement, but just to. Make it a playroom for existing space seems. And either we approve it and he does it. Legally, or we don't approve it and he makes it into a play space anyhow.
I wouldn't think he would do that.
I don't think he would do that either, but I, so I I. Kind of like this point, I think it's. Improvement that. Should be approved.
Yes. Okay, any other, any other comments? Someone want to make a motion?
I move we approve the.
As proposed.
As proposed.
Is there a discussion of the motion before we have a second? Okay, do we have a second of the motion?
I'll second it.
I'll say, go ahead. Who who is it? Eve, you seconded it, right? Okay. Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Um. Let's vote. Claudia?
Okay, Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson? Yes. Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
No. I have no justification for the live- habitable space.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenamo?
Yep.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
It's approved. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so we're. Not gonna hear the third case this evening, so. I guess we're adjourned. Any others, do we have anything we want to talk about before we adjourn?
No, thanks, everyone.
Okay, we'll see you next month.
Good meeting, Steve. Thanks.
You're welcome.
About the uh. These. The neighborhood character stuff. It goes all the way up. It's RA and the RB zones are exempt, and this is the largest residential zone, so. I think one way to look at this, because I mean, I, you see people that have a two car garage and they want to add another one to the side, or have one car garage and they want to add another one in. They gotta come get a variance. I mean, they have to do that, but I think it. Like you guys picked up, it has more relevance on a. On a quarter acre lot. Than a two acre lot, you know.
On a two acre heavily wooded lot.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
But Mike, I I struggle with it as a, to, you know, to.
You what?
I struggle with it, you know, how to. Going for, look at it, you know.
Well, what's what's justification? I mean, how do you justify? You're just adding, you're adding more space for your kids to play. Is that justification? I don't know. I'm just saying, I mean. You know, I I see on a house like this, I see a bigger house relatively, not a tremendous house, but. I think proportionally, if I look at it that way, putting a room over the garage to sort of, you're gonna create that height in there anyway. And it's a shame to have the space go to waste when you could use it.
Interesting. Well, thanks, everybody. Good to see y'all.
Okay, so we'll see you next month.
Great.
Right. You know, it's, I think about that garage setback question, which, you know, I would have approved that too, because we've discussed it before. That it it's so hard to apply that to an existing dwelling. Especially ranch style. Sort of longitudinal houses.